Good evening, everyone. And welcome to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board.
Yep.
It is Monday, June 4, 2018 at 5:00 PM. I'd like to call meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Peterson?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Udrow?
Here.
Bollig?
Here.
Staton?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Burner?
Thank you. Our first item is a swearing in of Police Officer Alex Hale. I'd like to welcome Alex and all his family and friends and our officers who are here. And then turn this over to Chief Buell for his comments. Chief? You're welcome.
This is definitely one of my favorite parts of the position. I get to welcome a new officer. So on behalf of the members of the Oregon Police Department, I would like to welcome you all to the Oath of Office ceremony for Alex Hale. The mission of the Oregon Police Department is to safeguard lives and property of the people we serve to reduce the incidents and fear of crime and to enhance public safety while working with our community to improve the quality of life. Our objective is to do so with honor and integrity while at all times conducting ourselves with the highest ethical standards to maintain public trust and confidence. The men and women of the Oregon Police Department promote a safe environment through police and citizen interaction and by equitable enforcement of laws of the Village of Oregon, State of Wisconsin, within the framework of the Constitution of the United States. The members of the Oregon Police Department are committed to working together as a team by providing, by being innovative, professional, and responsive to public safety concerns of our citizens. We have created an organization that is staffed by highly motivated, dedicated, and competent personnel, and we are pleased that Alex has accepted our offer to become the newest member of our team. A little bit about Alex. Alex is from Union Grove where he graduated high school. After high school, he went on to college at Viturbo University in La Crosse where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and minored in substance abuse counseling. Alex attended the Basic Law Enforcement Recruit Academy at Western Technical College in Sparta and just graduated a couple of weeks ago. So congratulations for doing all of that. I would like to welcome Alex's friends and family and thank you for allowing Alex to follow his dreams. To Alex's parents, thank you for raising such a fine young man. And to Alex's father, who is also a police officer in Racine, thank you for your service and being a guiding example that allowed your son to follow his calling. It is with great honor and pride that we swear Alex in as the newest member of the Oregon Police Department. I would now like to ask our Village Board President Steve Staton to please step forward and formally deliver the oath of office to Alex. Alex, you want to come on up?
Thank you, Chief, and I, a couple of comments. I will say, Chief, talk about all the stuff our Police Department does. I also say that myself and the board are very pleased with the excellent performance with which they carry out their duties. This is a really good police force. It's young, we have a great command staff, and you're coming to a really fine place to work, Alex. So congratulations. So I'm going to meet you right here. It's getting longer and longer for you to make that walk, Steve.
I know, I'm slower, I'm slower. You're out of order, by the way. Okay, so if you'd raise your right hand, please, Alex, repeat after me. I, Alexander P. Hale.
I, Alexander P. Hale.
Disumely swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
Disumely swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Oregon Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Village of the Oregon Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of June 4, 2018.
I will assume my duties as of June 4, 2018.
Got it.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you.
Alex, congratulations and welcome. There's some extra goodies.
So many goodies, huh?
How you doing?
Feel light, aren't they?
How you doing?
Welcome again. Congratulations.
How are you?
Oh, are you? Yeah, I was arguing with my granddaughter. She's a little pissed off.
Well, you can get mad, you're getting better.
Are you ready for a picture?
Ready.
Welcome to the board. Congratulations. All right, I'll meet you up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Yep.
You're going to do the photos out there, huh?
That's a good idea.
Okay, we're going to go to item four, which is public appearances. We're going to item four G to start with, which is discussion with Jamie Bush regarding August 4th, JCPark West fundraiser at headquarters. And Jamie, we would like to get you out of here for baseball practice. Thank you for doing, thank you for doing that. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, it's going to be ugly. So, what can I?
Go ahead, just explain what you have planned, please, as a fundraiser.
The plan that we have so far is we would like to have a event, kind of using the outdoor patio, the volleyball courts, to bring the band Super Tuesday, if anybody's familiar with that. They're very popular, they draw huge crowds. So we'd like to then do it with a pig row. So basically via wristband, all of the proceeds go towards the park project. It's really an outreach program because when you're doing something like this, it's really good to keep it in the public eye that we're doing this whole project. And so people are like, oh, what did I, you know, I haven't heard about that. So we're trying all sorts of little events. This is kind of a big one. We're hoping that then, you know, we can bring in the families. They can come in on the sand, hang out, listen to the music, and, you know, eat food and do whatever they want to do. And then we'll donate everything. We have some games and some ideas for like, you know, 50-50 raffles and different things going on during it. But essentially, the point is to bring public awareness to what we're trying to do with the JCPark project and then to raise some funds for that. We'll have products that people can buy, like t-shirts and sweatshirts that we are doing with our website. You guys probably don't know about this, if you haven't been to any of our meetings, but I have actually started a website with Tycee to actually allow people with a pamphlet for all the kids to hand out so people can go online and order like, shirts, t-shirts, sweatshirts, hats, water bottles that have the logo on it, hopefully trying to raise funds for Phase 1. So that's where we're kind of at right now. So this is just one of the options that are, one of the steps that we're doing to try to continue making the park a reality.
Okay, and this is entirely a fundraiser for JCPark West, not for headquarters?
Oh, no.
Yeah, I just want to be sure everybody watching knew that.
Nope, we don't, I mean, we literally, if, once they walk on the sand, they have to buy a wristband, that gets them out there, then, then, then it has nothing to do with us. I mean, in terms of me, I personally, I mean, I'm actually even, I'm paying out of my pocket for the stage. I mean, I'm paying a couple thousand dollars just to get them there.
Yeah.
So I'm actually losing money by having it, but it's long-term better goal, in my opinion.
Yeah. So, questions?
I noticed that it's going to be a non-alcoholic, a non-alcohol event?
We are not supplying any alcohol as part of this. If people want to go into the bar area, they can. I mean, but that's not part of, that's not part of what you get. If you, you know, you buy the wristband, you're allowed to go in and out. The food is included, the music is included. If people would like to, they, I mean, we're not stopping them from doing that, and that's not, I mean, obviously, but we are not, that's not like, you don't get drink tickets. You are not presented with anything. So it is, that is, to be completely honest, the cost, my cost upfront is a couple thousand dollars. I would hope that by the time, maybe the alcohol would recoup my cost, but that doesn't have anything to do with the proceeds that then would be going to the park.
Have you, this is more for the benefit, for the benefit of my knowledge because I don't, because I don't know what you've done to this point. I know that in the past, you've adjusted where you're carding people so that the outside bar is protected from underage drinkers. Do you plan on doing the same thing, or?
Well, yeah, we will actually have at every exit to get out to the patio because the entire event will be either in the outdoor area, sand patio. There will be people there that will actually be giving the wristbands, and then they are either marked with a Sharpie X, meaning you are not 21, or, you know, then if you have a wristband and no Sharpie X on your hand, and I don't, unless somebody's willing to lose all their skin, they're not getting that off. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is this, if it's rain, rain or?
I have talked to Bucky, and we have, that would be another cost, but I would incur that would be a tent. It's planned, so we can actually cover the entire courts with a ungodly and expensive tent. But yes, we could go that route if we have to. So if, as long as it's not like thunderstorms or something like that. But otherwise, yes, we'd still be going on if it was raining. The real question is, is our current amplified music goes until 10:00. We're not wanting to go late. We don't want to upset anybody. We want to keep this family-friendly. So, I mean, we're looking like, I mean, like five to nine would be the hours that we'd probably try to do it. The band usually plays for a little while, has a break during that break is when we'd be doing our fundraiser in terms of like, we have an idea of taking all the golf balls that they use from the chamber and like letting them do a 50-50 raffle and then having like a cup, and then everybody can throw it and tell somebody gets it in the cup and they split, you know. Just different ideas that we're working through, trying to figure out how we can promote the park.
So you're wondering why this is in front of you? So, yes, it's a little challenging in the zoning code. Matt and I have been talking with Jeff about this for a while. It'd be a lot easier if in Jeff, or no, sorry, in Jamie's GDP-first property that outdoor concert was permitted. It's not. And so, Matt, you could make a wrong one, go through this. But so what we'd have to do is Jeff, as the zoning administrator, would issue a temporary outdoor assembly permit, basically. And, and, and there's, there's actually a provision in the zoning code that allows that with some requirements. You know, Jamie has to give us some detail on what he wants to do. The, the issue is the noise. And I talked to Jamie about this a little before the meeting is, there's probably no way that Super Tuesday is not going to probably exceed the village's noise ordinance. You know, and we're, amongst staff, we're working on that, trying to figure that out. But it still ends up being a zoning administrator's decision whether or not to issue the permit or not, so. Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, you know, like Jamie said, it does allow, their GDP approval does allow amplified music up until 10:00 PM. It doesn't say, I mean amplified music is amplified music, but it does allow outdoor music up till 10:00 PM. We're trying to get our hands around how to handle special events. And we've kind of dealt with this concept when we were talking about the ICE Arena, and they were talking about maybe four concerts a year. And at that time, we told them that that would be something they would bring back to the Village Board just for a plan, you know, and then there would be a, maybe a special event permit that would be granted for that special event. So we've toyed around with this before. I think it's very important just before, I, I'm not comfortable just going red and blanket, saying, okay, yeah, I can have a concert in the neighborhood. I know there's been some sensitivities with noise in previous. I know when you put in the restaurant, there was some concerns.
We haven't had, that was four years ago.
Exactly, it hasn't had, it has been, it's been a zero issue. I've never received a complaint on it in three years, so. But I know when it was, things like that, when they go in, there, there always.
We were having, oh, yeah, I mean, I think it was more we were just new and people were like, that's annoying.
You know, I've looked at where they're, where they're putting the stage and how they're facing it, which is actually facing towards like Max Creek and the wetland out there. And there's really no residential going in that direction. And I, and you're not talking about blasting the doors off of this place either, so I, I'm assuming so.
No.
You know, so.
Well, I don't.
So, you know, looking at it, it seemed, it seemed like a reasonable use, but we still need to kind of get our hands around how we would handle, how the noise ordinance can, can handle that in the future. But I think the feeling was is if we brought it before the Village Board and the Board said, we would recommend you not approve that, then, you know, I would honor the Board's wishes on that. If the Board said, we don't see a problem with you issuing that permit, then I would have no problem issuing that permit to them.
Can you remind me what we did with Ziggy's?
Ziggy's was no outdoor amplified sound. And that was part of their, that was when going through their, their SIP approval process, one of the stipulations was no outdoor amplified sound. Now, they could have a band, but not have it run through an amplifier, you know, amplifier and into speakers. But because they were wanting kind of an outdoor beer garden and kind of possible flea market slash art fair, whatever, out in the parking lot there. And they, at that time, they, that was going to be a sticking point. They said, okay, we'll just have no outdoor amplified music and, you know, we'll get approved through that process.
Go ahead, just a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Matt.
So we look at the, the current zoning for the property. It's planned development district zoning. So there is a general development plan that for the outdoor area allows only use of the volleyball courts for volleyball, and there's an outdoor patio area for dining. And there is a recognition of possibility of music until 10:00 PM under the GDP. I, I don't know what you're actually doing. It's to my, I'm not aware, it's not live music. If anything, you have some.
Little tiny speakers, yes.
Right, and that was contemplated, and that's allowed under the GDP till 10:00 PM. Under the, and that has to comply with our noise regulations prior to 10:00 PM. Under a temporary use permit, there are a couple of restrictions that will kick in, one of which, the activities have to be limited to daylight hours. So once sunset comes, that will be the end, at least under the current ordinance.
August 4th, right?
Yeah, unless that, unless we're able to change the ordinance by then, daylight hours. And you still have the noise restrictions to deal with. And I think we are going to be discussing this entire temporary use ordinance at the staff level.
And then to planning.
And to bring it to planning commission because I think we recognize there are some, some complicated issues that we've run into in evaluating this matter that we think we should address, you know, we should make some adjustments to the ordinance so that we'd solve some problems for the next time this comes around. But.
But as Matt has explained to me, the new state law makes it a little bit more complicated because once you, once you allow events like this, then you have to have a very good reason not to allow other events. So we have to be careful as we go into this, no?
Right, we will be work, we will be treating this like a conditional use permit from a, from a legal standpoint. And there are some changes that we have to contend with relating to conditional use permits. But under the current ordinance, the zoning administrator has the authority to issue this permit. The, the constraints are daylight and the noise limitations are still in effect. So we'll have to talk about how to deal with that.
Sunset, sunset on August 4th is 8:15 PM for Madison, so.
Have you thought at all, first of all, I'm really in support of whatever you're doing to try to raise money for the ball fields. I think it's awesome and I want to try to get behind it. Have you thought about a different location? Like, have we considered maybe renting out or using Kaiser Fireman's Park as a, as a venue?
I hadn't because I don't know what that would entail. I just have access to headquarters. So I figured it was that, that I knew what I had there and I knew what I could do. So I would, I would be interested, I mean, if there was another option to do something, I mean, although, yeah, I mean, I guess I don't, I don't know. That's new.
We could certainly look into that. Again, there'd be a zoning issue, and we'd be looking at the outdoor assembly use as a temporary use. And we'd be looking at it from the standpoint of it's a village park, so what do we have to do there? And then we'd have an alcohol issue because at headquarters, there's an alcohol beverage license that's been issued, and the premises description includes the outdoor area. So people who do buy alcohol inside could bring it outside, I think, under the existing license. So there would be a different process we'd have to go through to authorize something like this in the park.
So I, I would encourage you to consider that, especially if, you know, if we're moving in the direction of where the state is going to, is going to be more directive in terms of what we can and cannot do. It might be nice to think, I mean, to think about how we could maybe use Kaiser Fireman's Park equitably among groups that wanted to do something similar to this. And I think about Summerfest and how, well, how, first of all, how well-run it is, but how that area has proven itself to be an area that can support that kind of activity. And I get that that's not a today thing, but.
But Summerfest has been part of our discussion on this very issue.
So if it's, is it possible to direct Jeff to allow Jamie to have this event up to 8:15? Because otherwise, we'd have to rewrite the ordinance?
To do what?
To allow Jamie to have this event with amplified music up until 8:15, which would be sunset according to what Jeff found in the.
That's allowable right now under the, it's allowable under the current code so long as he operates within the current noise limitations. And I'm not sure if that's really achievable with amplified music.
And we can't make an exception to that?
No.
Without changing the ordinance?
Or without granting a variance, which is not something this body does. That'll be the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I don't think you could meet the standard. So it's, it's a zoning change, and it's a little, it's, it's a complicated zoning change because once we make this change, if we do it in the temporary use provisions that we have today, we'd be opening the door in a way that we'll have to talk about. That might be wider than you'd like to open the door.
So is there anything that the Board can do this evening to support Jamie? Or is, is this pretty much?
This isn't, this isn't even, well, there's, there's no decision for the Board to make tonight. This is for your information. The zoning administrator, I think what he's saying is he's prepared to issue the permit for this event under the current ordinances. And we're at a staff level, we're going to talk about what adjustments we could make to the ordinance, potentially even before the event, although it would be difficult, given the amount of time involved. I don't know if we can get, you know, because we've got to, we've got to develop the language, it's got to go to the planning commission, class two notice, public hearing, all of that. Getting all of that done by August what?
4th, it's not going to happen.
It's not going to happen. So I think the discussion is going to have to be between the zoning administrator and Jamie about how to deal with the event and is there a way to do it that's consistent with this, with the noise requirements that we're operating under today? And we'll see where that discussion goes.
And I think there are conditions that we can discuss and kind of talk about that will allow, allow Jamie and the group to still hold the event while, I think, taking in concern, neighbors, what's going on, time of day, placement of the speakers, volume of the sound, you know, that type of thing that I think we're kind of doing our due diligence to, you know, try to, try to make everybody happy with it.
Well, I think it's a great event. There's several things I like about it. I like that it's not revolving around alcohol. That's cool. I like that there's alcohol available, but the wristband doesn't get you, you know, free drinks all night or whatever. I think that's, I'm fully behind that. And so I would encourage staff to, you know, work with Jamie to make it happen. You know, maybe the band plays from 5:00 to 8:00, but the event goes until 10:00 or something. I don't know. Let's try to make, make it work so that you can help, help our Jamie and help out this project.
Yeah, I'd say I agree. I think Jeff should approve this for Jamie and this activity and proceed and work to meet all the guidelines you can. Long-term, we have to look at how do we deal with the noise going forward.
Yeah, and actually, I prefer not to rush to do it. We, I think we have to be careful if we open up a problem here in the future, so.
Yeah, that's a great event. Jamie's putting in some of his own money for it. We appreciate that. You're a good organizer and you support, you sports demand, so.
Keep going. In 30 minutes.
I know. She says get this done, right?
Yeah, and so we'll see. Yeah, the bus should be arriving from OMS, so, you know, my kids will be showing up. So are we good? I mean, I'm sorry, I don't want to run out, but.
Are we all okay with going ahead at headquarters on August 4th?
Yes.
You got it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, just, yeah, just email me and I'll come over and do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay, back to item four, public appearances. For a TDS build-out and possible board action. Item one, introduce Attorney Anita Galucci. Okay, I thought, so I was going to get that right. Boardman Clark Law Firm. Overview of the village's involvement in TDS build-out, including the following items. A, review of revised draft application to excavate in public right-of-way. B, review of task force order from Ruka to Milkie for field inspections. C, discussion of required easement for TDS work in Stone Ridge Park. And D, review of collecting franchise fees. So you're on for those things. Welcome.
Good evening. What I would like to address is the process that we're going through in order to be able to handle the sort of pressure, if you will, that the village is going to have by the large construction project that TDS is proposing to do. I'm sure we're all very happy to have TDS come and provide fiber-to-the-home service, video, internet, et cetera. But that does mean that there's going to be a lot of construction, from what I understand, and they'll explain later, that it's going to be done on a phased-in basis. What that means for the village, however, is do you have the resources to be able to manage that construction process from a village regulatory point of view? You certainly don't have the people resources to do that, to do it on, and meet TDS's timeframe for rolling out its service. So the first thing that we've looked at is what is your current permitting process? What will happen is that TDS will submit its construction plans to the village. The village will have to review those and then issue a permit. So we started with your existing permit for what's called a street opening permit. Going to change the name of it, but. And that was a very basic permit that really didn't address a lot of issues that this type of village-wide build-out raises, those sorts of issues. What you have now is fine for the occasional permit request you get from the gas company or the electric company when they have a small project to do, but certainly not a project that takes into account the entire village. So I was tasked with helping to develop your permit procedure that would address a lot of the issues that may come up. So we're in the process now. We've started with your existing permit. We have a draft which significantly expands the scope of that permit in terms of the sort of information that is required to be submitted with each permit application in terms of the requirements during construction and the role that the village will play during that process. Going back to the resources.
Real quick question.
Yes.
So this permit here, is this the proposed new permit?
It's a draft, it's just a draft.
It's a draft. It's a work in progress. It, it starts with your existing permit application and it adds additional provisions.
And then my second question is, is this a per-event application or a per-project application? So would it be every time that they need to open a part of a street? Or would it be every single opening because it's all part of one project?
Good question. You'll hear from TDS in a little bit, but it's my understanding that there are at least, let's say, three to four phases of the project. And we would anticipate that there would be one permit per phase, okay? Or per neighborhood area, if you will. Okay, so it's not every single time they have to open up the street, they have to give us a different permit.
Thank you.
Okay. So going back to the resource issue, right now, I believe if a permit application is submitted, the review of that permit application falls entirely on the shoulders of your Director of Public Works. Given the number of permits and the, not just the number, but the coverage of those permits, it would take, Jeff, months.
Well, we, yeah, we would, we would treat it kind of like we do a development right now. You know, if a new development comes in, it may, it could take several weeks for, we would, I, I would probably be handing off a lot of it to our engineers and who would do the review. And then they would provide the comments of whether or not we should be signing this permit and any kind of stipulations for it, so. But it would, so, you know, it would take, it'd take a while to, to. But it would so, you know, it would take it would take a while to to do each one just because you're having to look, you know, we're not talking about just adding a small box here or there. We're talking about basically almost like a whole utility installation for a street type of thing or a neighborhood.
And are all of the streets that are the subject streets, are they all village owned? Or are some of them county owned or?
All village, well, everything within the village, yeah, is village owned. I'm not sure how they're handling the anything in Dane County highways. It's a good question.
But we only have you only have jurisdiction over the village streets.
Right. I was asked what prompted me to ask the question was what Jeff said about timing. And I know that some projects have to not only get approved by the village, but they also have to be approved by the county. And that affects timing. That's what caused the question.
We don't, my concern is we don't want to be holding up. I I don't want to be holding up progress of of T D S coming in. I mean, they they have a it's a and and you're a T D S, right? Yes, okay. It's a it's a very complex project. And it's a lot of moving parts of bringing the trunk line all the way over from Verona and eventually connecting into McFarland, I believe. Getting that trunk line through the village, getting those, I call them hubs, inside the village, and then getting that from those places into all the streets. And then once they're in the where are the streets, the right of ways, the easement areas, and then final step of then getting them from the easement areas into all the houses for services. And so it's it's a it's a very, very complex process.
Do you want to explain, Jeff, the proposal to hire Rupert Milkie?
So we looked at, we were looking at a couple of things as far as, you know, when when we're trying to figure out, okay, we don't want to be holding things up. You know, what what's what are our options? Well, you know, if we don't have enough staff to cover things, then we either add staff, which would be like an L T E person or something like that, a limited term employment person, or we could do what we normally do, which is we contract out with our engineer, our village engineer. And it's nice because they can bring experienced individuals in that that have a little more. I mean, it can be sometimes hard to get a temporary position with a person with training and everything like that. And so we we actually spoke to, excuse me, Rupert Milkie, who's our village engineer, and kind of said, what if we treated this similar in similar fashion to a subdivision construction project or roadway construction project? And in that situation, they have a, we call them resident project representative that would come in, observe, be able to answer questions, all that type of thing. And then kind of be a liaison for T D S to be able to process these applications, to be able to be out on the ground, to be able to field resident complaints and that type of thing, kind of this clearinghouse. We act we kind of look at it as a benefit for both parties. Benefit for the village is in the fact that it takes some of the load that we just can't handle onto off of our shoulders. And then it also allows, you know, things with T D S to keep moving. So we asked for a proposal for that and they gave us a proposal for a person that would be about thirty hours a week over a period of, I believe, sixteen weeks. Is that right?
Four, yeah, four months.
Four months. And and that's and that's really varying because, you know, originally they were planning on starting construction about a month ago and being done in October. And that's, you know, changed a little bit. They're they're just like all projects, you're dealing with contractors and schedules and permitting and everything else. So they they will be extending into winter, I think, you know, so. So that's that's that was our thinking on that. Our feeling was that is that was not really a cost that we we have to weigh everything all the time. Obviously, it's village, whether or not that is something that should be borne by the residents. And our feeling was that, you know, if T D S is coming in, it's a it's a we're gonna require a lot of time and effort. And just like we would a developer, we requested that they pay that back to the village. And we kind of ran that up the flagpole with T D S and got an initial feedback as why we've never had to do that before. Is that about right, Anita?
That's what I understand.
Yeah. And so, you know, we're kind of, that's one of the discussion topics tonight is is that something that the village feels that we should kind of continue to maybe push back a little bit on that and 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 say that, you know, this is, I look at it as as a win-win for both if we can if we can make this work. But, you know, I'd love to hear.
Can I ask you a question in terms of the, you were talking about weighing everything?
Yes.
There's a piece of information I just can't remember anymore. What what are the what are the anticipated fees that T D S will be paying to the village once this fiber optic system is in place?
Great question, yeah.
I can address that.
It's number number D, or letter D.
Thank you.
Should I go ahead and answer?
Sure, please.
There are, other than the fifty dollar permit fee for the right of way permit, there aren't any ongoing regular fees to be paid by T D S to the village, except to the extent that they have revenues from providing video service. If, and I assume they're gonna provide video, Chris? Okay, so as a video service provider, they're required by law to pay a franchise fee, just like charter, I assumes your incumbent pays a franchise fee.
Five percent.
Whatever level, if it's five percent, you charge, collect five percent from charter, you can do so from T D S.
Do we have a estimate of what we we think that might be?
No, we don't. But you should keep and maybe they do and address that.
But the other thing to point out, Anita, is.
Yeah, I'm going to, yeah. One thing to keep in mind is that if what happens is you have transfer of charter customers to T D S, then there won't be any difference in increase in your overall franchise fees. However, it is possible likely that there'll be folks who take satellite service now and will switch from satellite, which pays no franchise fee, to the village. They'll take T D S services. So then you'll have a a new customer, a new source of of revenue. But T D S has experience when they've gone into other communities, Wanakee, for example, and they can give you some sense of what impact their provision of video service has had on the overall franchise fee.
Just to clarify, video service, that's not internet service? That you get video to your computer? You're talking like television cable type?
Yes.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Jeff, you posed a question earlier about the fees or the costs to the village. I personally think, and I would encourage the board to strongly consider, that we treat this like a developer. They're gonna come in here, install their infrastructure for the purpose of of making money. And I think that I I know you indicated that no one else has paid that, but that doesn't mean that that it's the right thing to do or by any means that we have to do that. So I I, again, would ask this board to consider requiring the T D S pick up these costs of. Jeff, do you have a any idea what these costs are gonna be?
Right, well, I mean, at at the thirty hours a week, and and I should say that some weeks may only be ten hours, some weeks could be forty hours, depending on the construction schedule and that type of thing. But the the proposal that they gave us was a right around fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, and we haven't budgeted this anywhere, have we?
We've not, no.
We have not, so I, again, for the third time, I will be looking for T D S to pay these costs.
I I should say that you do have the authority under the law to require T D S to pay for the costs that they put on you due to this project. Under the Wisconsin statutes, you can recover the cost of regulation.
Okay.
So this would be part of that process. Otherwise, you have your taxpayers subsidizing a third-party commercial use of your right of way. And not all of the taxpayers will be benefiting from the T D S service because only some of them will be subscribers. So that just points out the inequity, if you will, of having the taxpayer fund this additional burden.
So again, back to my question about a balance. I still haven't heard the answer of projected revenue because that will benefit all the taxpayers. And it does help inform my decision when it comes to what am I willing to spend for the potential revenue that would come as a result of that spend?
If I could just respond to that. The franchise fee is already a fee that recognizes that you're giving value to the video service provider by allowing the use of your right of way. So those fees are already for rental, if you will, of local right of way. So you would be taking money away from that pot that already has a designated purpose and putting it toward this other use.
So let's say hypothetically, T D S says, you know, Oregon is a community that doesn't want to cooperate with us, so we're gonna go around Oregon. We're gonna find a way to get to McFarland without going through Oregon. What sorts of franchise fees will we recover if they do that?
I understand what the concern is. I'm just laying out what the what the pros and cons are.
It was an honest question, I don't know. I mean, you talk about the franchise fees being being our legal right to collect. So even if they go around Oregon, if they provide homes in Oregon with access to their fiber optic, that would that would that would allow us to recover franchise fees?
I didn't understand what you were asking. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
It is, you get a franchise fee of off of the revenue that they earn from providing service to Oregon subscribers.
So if they go around Oregon and don't provide T D S service to Oregon, then there's no franchise fee. But as long as they provide T D S service to residents in Oregon, then we recover five percent franchise fee.
That's correct.
And I I ask these questions and especially about the revenue piece because I watched Sun Prairie wrestle with this very debate. And what they found was the takedown rate for high-speed internet was tremendous. And it drove a ton of development in Sun Prairie, both in the business park and on the residential side. They wound up having to fund the entire thing upfront. The taxpayers had to sit down and they had to bite down on a very large loan to get this started through Sun Prairie Utilities. Ultimately, Sun Prairie Utilities was not able to do it as efficiently as T D S and as a result, sold that to T D S. But it was a very, very successful pilot. And it really benefited that community. So having seen that with over the last seven years and having seen the debate, was tremendous amount of debate at the alderman's level about whether or not they were gonna do that. I don't think they did much better than a fifty fifty split all the way along. But in the end, that community is light years ahead of where they would be had they not partnered up with the Sun Prairie Utilities. So before I would be willing to just dismiss this relationship offhand, I'd like to think forward and see what are the benefits potentially to the village to partnering with T D S, rather than be reactionary and try to figure out how we're gonna do it by ourselves, if we can even do it by ourselves, because we don't have a a public utility that we can even start it in.
I don't think anyone's ever, no one, none of us want to try to see something with this agreement and with this plan not move forward. I mean, that's, I think our feeling is just how can we? How can we make it smooth, in my mind, much more smoother for their process to go through? Because, you know, we've we've done our research and and spoken to other communities and that. And, you know, it's standard, and and this has nothing to do with T D S. I could just say utility company A coming into any community is gonna have problems with resident complaints, trees dying, sidewalks buckling, payment, you know, giving in a year later from a board that goes under, you know, all these things that kind of happen just because we're doing, someone's doing work in the village. And so being able to have someone to be able to kind of handle that is is, I think, incredibly important.
Well, we're having a conversation right now that that to me is is kind of leading me down the road of why should we burden the taxpayers with fifty one thousand dollars of expense? And my answer to that is, well, if you're gonna generate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of revenue in the first year, that's the answer to the question. Because as you said, you put it to T D S and they said, well, nobody else has asked us to do that. So maybe in T D S is, and I hate to play this all the way out, I just ask one simple question.
Jeff, I was gonna say, Anita's suggestion, two suggestions, was we would ask Chase, who's here from T D S, to is to maybe run this up a little bit further up the corporate ladder just to get an official response from T D S, number one. And number two, we should go into closed session to talk about this. Because we're actually negotiating with, I mean, so at a future board meeting. They're they're not as, they're not on the same schedule they were when they first met with us. So we we have time, next couple of meetings. I think here's a suggestion, we go into closed session to maybe have a discussion about this.
So what was for A, T D S buildout and possible board action? What was the possible board action part of that?
If you wanted to make a decision tonight on any of this, you know, I I put it on there as possible action.
And now we're talking about closed session possibly?
Yeah, I'm, as a suggestion, if you want to make a decision tonight on this, you can.
I don't have enough information.
So so then I would.
Yeah. Then I would. We need to push it down a little ways.
Yep.
And, you know, from the standpoint of going into closed session and the and the standpoint of this being a negotiation, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we go into closed session and negotiate with developers all the time.
We do, yep.
To Jerry's point about treating this like a developer, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I'm just a little confused as to what I'm supposed to be doing and I'm not prepared.
This is this is an overview. I put possible action in case for some reason you wanted to take some action on something. It doesn't mean you have to. Because if I, but if I don't have it on the agenda, sometimes it's a little questionable about you taking any action on something.
Ounce of prevention, pound of cure.
Just a couple of questions on, I'm trying to sort out in my mind what the different issues are where decisions would need to be made. And one of the things I'm hearing is a decision about whether to contract with Rupert Milkie for services. That would be, that's not before the board tonight for action, but it's part of the but it's part of the background information?
Yeah.
So we don't have an actual contract to vote on tonight, but it's potential.
I think you just, we asked for a proposal, just so this the framework, you can see what is in their scope of services, kind of what they envision providing and and then kind of what we're looking at as far as a general fee.
And and so we do have their proposal and.
It's in the packet, yeah.
To see, so you can get a sense of what the scope of services is.
And if I could just pause you real quick there to balance that.
Yep.
Jeff 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 invests his time in every developer's proposal. We just don't market that way. Jeff Jeff just happens to have a proposal in front of him right now, which is bigger than the department. Just can't be done efficiently.
Correct.
So I think that's worth noting.
Right, so one of the one of the decisions, though, that would have to be made is how are we gonna handle this? From a workload standpoint, is are we gonna contract for additional services from our engineering firm? Or is this gonna be handled in-house? And then the next question is if we do contract with Rupert Milkie for additional services, is that a cost that we should ask T D S to pay as part of the permitting process? And then there's another question, I'm I'm not sure if this is, I expect this will be a board question. Will the board approve the permit ultimately, the form that we're using? Or is that administrative from your perspective?
I'd have the board approve it.
The board would approve that.
The permit form, not the permits, but the permit form, yes.
Right, the form of the permit.
Yeah.
The 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 actual approval would be administrative once the form is approved, we're expecting.
Yeah, and this, this is like anything else as far as anytime we get into something as we're, we kind of pull out something like, well, we have not updated that in ten years, fifteen years, thirty years. Some of these are looking like they're off of old mimeograph machines and stuff. And so it does tend to, you know, we look at things and say, okay, how can we make this more efficient? How can we make this more effective? And so this is really just pushing it. It's not because of T D S or trying to offset anything. It's just, we looked at it and we said it was a street opening permit. And we said, what does that mean? You know, and really, does it, what we needed was a permit for within the village right of way, whether it's utility or stormwater or who knows whatever, you know, could be in there, so. But we would have it run through village board for approval.
And one of the thoughts that I've got floating around in my mind is this, sometimes development will only come into a community if the community is willing to invest in the development. And I think it's important to look at this project through that lens, not to make a decision through that lens, but to look at the project through that lens. So I would invite T D S to think about how they would answer that question.
The other thing I'd like to know in addition to the information we've been talking about is the extent of the disruption to people. Like the the overview map was not in the packet. I saw the door hanger, but the map was not included.
So the map, the map's actually in the corner over there, Amanda. I know you can't really see it very well. And actually, if you go on to their website, it's actually have a really good website. You can actually see that map on their website if you if you want to look at it. But right now, their main their main focus is is bringing the trunk from Verona.
Oh, yeah, Chase, if you have comments you'd like to make, feel free to come up and.
And we're very lucky, Chase is a village resident too, so we can, and we know where you live now, so we got. And we're very lucky, Chase is a village resident too, so we can, and we know where you live now, so we got. So then the last thing that we were going to talk about is there was a discussion of what, they, they want to put in a, I'm just going to use it for a very term, a pedestal in Stone Ridge Park. And Anita, actually, I think Amanda suggested that we do it through an easement agreement. So we'll be doing an easement with TDS for that. And Jeff, I think, has found a.
Yeah, we, we were going to put it right along the property line, back along Lynn Trail Properties. And we've since found out that there's a lot of utilities back in that area. We found another area that's kind of more in the center of the park area that will, it's a cabinet, it does have a fan and stuff in it. So it makes kind of what a bound, noise of a computer, maybe something like that. So we'll have them landscape, do a little landscaping around it, but it'll be a good location.
And it sounds to me like I've heard that Jeff, you've indicated, maybe others have indicated, that you'd like some more information to help you process and make some decisions. So it'd be great if we could get a handle on what you feel you need to know and try and think about how to get that information. I, one piece of information we've talked about is financial, you know, franchise fees.
Project revenue.
What might that look like? What other information would you find helpful, I guess, would be good to know? So we can make sure you have that when you have to make decisions.
Can we sell an easement for $50,000? Jeff, $51,000.
Yes, we can, if someone's willing to pay.
Yes, that's right. No, I.
And I think that's part of the recognition here is, you know, what's going to work for both parties?
Yeah. But we always, but Matt and I, Matt and I always, particularly Matt, always recommends that we don't negotiate in open session. So I think your comments are great, it gives us like, we're believing. But I think picking up Anita's suggestion she made to me last week, this is a closed session item in a future board meeting, so.
Do you need a motion to that effect, Mike?
No.
Thanks, Anita.
So Chase, did you have comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, I can just kind of explain the construction a little bit too, just kind of how TDS is proposing and kind of what our game plan is, if you will. So we, we need to start in Verona. We have an access point which will tie our fiber in. The fiber from Verona wraps around and ties through Madison, which wraps just north of McFarland, which is why we want to come through Oregon, come up through McFarland to tie back into the big green network. So coming from Verona, we'll be coming down county roads, which will obviously be outside of the village of Oregon. Once we come in, we want to break it into two different construction projects or two different contractors, if you will. So if you see BA and CA, which are the two north areas, and we broke them down in that sense, there's going to be three cabinets that are going in. One cabinet is going to be in the northern area. That cabinet is going to be called BA. The second cabinet is kind of on the west side of Oregon, that's CA. Then the third cabinet is going to be in DA, which is kind of the southern section. The reason why we need to place those three is to amplify the fiber optics in order to give good service and provide the channels, cable, or not cable, but the TV, the internet, phone, we need to amplify those. And that's why we're placing those three. So by placing those three, we're breaking down every little, not, not every neighborhood, but if you can see the boundaries here, that's why we're breaking them up that way. So each one will have its own phase, BA1, BA2, BA3. So we're going to go in a sequence. We're not going to go all over town right-of-way, we're going to break it one by one. So we're going to have two contractors. One, one contracting bid is going to be for BA and CA only. So we'll have one contractor working on the north, kind of the north and west side of town. We'll have another contractor working down in the DA area. And that's kind of how we're approaching this. We're going to do it one by one by these serving areas. So it kind of helps isolate complaints, isolating issues. We're just going to do one step at a time. And that's kind of how we did Sun Prairie as well. And one thing too, Deanne with TDS just provided me too with financing fees. Their annual projection is going to be $35,856. And that is just a projection, a sample, but that is kind of the proposed revenue for you right, right during the first year mark.
So that's a net number in the first year?
I believe so.
You'll have to come to the microphone, please, so it picks up on TV. And welcome.
Julie Myers from TDS with the marketing team. So, yeah, we did an estimate of the franchise fees and a net amount. So we expect to take share from DirecTV and Dish, and we have done that in other markets. So the 35 is an incremental. We expect overall $143,000 that you would earn in franchise fees from all providers, assuming our take rates and the pay TV penetration overall. So the 35,000 is annual.
What kind of participation are you projecting?
Well, again, like our, our pay TV overall for this community, or US, or our.
Fees to the village is what I'm looking for.
Excuse me?
So how many people do you think, what type of participation are you expecting in the village?
We have seen in other areas with three competitors, so Frontier, Charter, and then us, that we take about 35% market share.
So basically a third?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And did I understand you to say that the, the net additional franchise fee in the first year?
Correct.
After you begin serving the whole community?
Yeah, that's at a ramped up rate.
So the first year after the entire service area is built out?
Correct.
You're projecting a net increase of $35,800 and some dollars?
And again, that's based on 4,000 households, some, you know, high-level assumptions.
Thank you.
But we're happy to share this with you.
Could we get a breakdown of that? Could you send it to the staff, please?
Certainly.
Okay.
And it'd be good, it'd be helpful for me if, if you could play that out a few years. I'm used to looking at the return on investment over time.
Sure. Absolutely.
Chase, when do you, when do you anticipate being, just for, for anyone watching or on, on the news or anything, when do you anticipate having breaking ground within the village?
If all goes to plan, if we can get our contractors in line. I know we've been negotiating pricing and everything with our contractors worked out. Basically, we're almost to the point where they're about to order their materials. They're getting ready for this, they're getting their yards ready. So I would say if all goes well, maybe July, mid-July, late-July. That's a projection, that's not.
That'd be the trunk line through the.
Yeah, so, yep, so that would be the transfer trunk line.
I can answer that question. Sean Murray, I'm in the right-of-way department. I'm going to be the one that is giving, giving you guys all the permits that you're going to see. The trunk line from Verona to McFarland, or Verona to Oregon is already approved. Dane County has already approved Highway M and A. Town of Oregon has already approved part of Fish Hatchery Road and a couple, Hillcrest Road and Lincoln Road. So we are all set for the, from the Verona to Oregon piece. And then we have one, no, two node sites, two DSA sites have already been approved. As you talked about before, the park site, we ran into a little snag because we didn't realize that there was going to be underground cable in the park. So we talked about the move. We'll be getting you an easement.
Yes.
Document for that soon. And then I think the, the third site, we are in negotiations right now for the third site, which is going to be on Wolf Street.
Oh, down on the south side?
Yep.
What was the cost for you to get Dane County to approve Highway M and the Town of Oregon to approve Highway A over?
I just, actually, I just got those, before I came here tonight, I got the letters. So I haven't looked at the cost yet. It all, for Dane County, it's by footage and also by how many pedestals are in the right-of-way. For something as long as this, I, I want to say probably with M and A, it's, I think it came to, I'm guessing it's probably going to be about $9,000, eight, nine, eight to $9,000 for the permitting. And they, and Dane County gives us an invoice every month.
Other questions or comments? So I think I heard Mike say that we'd like to just go to corporate and bump up with and.
If we get an official response from them, and then we'll have, I'll probably put it on the next meeting in closed session, 16.
When you say official response, what question are you posing?
Them covering the Rupert Millkey bill. And actually, Anita brought the good point when I was talking to her today, that also we're asking for them to help us cover the attorney fees for Gary and his.
Again, I think we should treat this just like any developer.
Consulting fees.
Yeah.
And we'll take that response and vote to closed session then.
And the reason I keep pounding on this is because there are going to be people that don't use the service at all. And then there are going to be people that choose to keep what they have. And I don't think it's fair to have the whole entire village population share in that cost if they aren't using it or they use another service.
It's not unreasonable. I mean, in any growth, any village-wide benefit from additional growth because of this is all really speculation. We can say that's probably going to happen, but that's not a guarantee. So, I mean, we have to weigh those things.
Good point. Okay, all on the same page on this, it looks like? Is it clear, TDS folks?
Yep, I'll run it up the ladder. Obviously, I'm not the, I don't have the authority to help you with that right now.
Okay, so the last thing, it was introduced, TDS representatives, status of the build-out. Is anything else, anybody else to be introduced or there are more folks back there?
You can just use the handphones.
I would just like to say hello. My name is Deanne Bagley and I'm an Oregon resident, so I graduated from Oregon High School. I've worked for TDS for over 20 years and I've seen these projects go out across the country. And I can guarantee you that you're going to see growth, that you're going to see people get excited, property values go up. Being part of a gigabit community is just an amazing opportunity for students, for people who want to work from home. The, the technology is the future. And Oregon will be one of the communities that is just set above and beyond all the other communities around. I mean, of course, our TDS communities are all there, but you're competing with other communities for people to move and whatnot. You know, Oregon will be where it's at. So I'm super proud to be part of the project, to bring it. And Jerry, I understand you're talking about the investment. TDS is putting in $9 million. It's going to take us a long time. You'll get your investment back, that $50,000, you'll get your investment back way faster than we're going to get our investment back.
So will TDS give us that in writing?
You know, it's just the, the long-term plan is, I mean, it's an investment that's made in the community. And I, you know, we've worked really great with Sun Prairie and, and the other communities that we've taken it to. So I just, I just have, I just want to give you confidence in the credibility of TDS, the integrity of the company, and how well TDS will serve and work with all the local officials. We, we have to deal with all of those problems as well, the grass and the cement. And we're very, very sincere in working with customers on that, so. And it does benefit the whole, the whole community in the end by being part of something, whether they subscribe to it now or not.
Thanks, Deanne.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Anything else, TDS?
I will mention one thing too, that kind of helped the village and whatnot, that we hired a third-party vendor, kind of inspectors, if you will, contractors. I'll pass around this door hanger. What the plan is, they're going to staple their business cards with these and we're going to hang these on every single door in, in town, in the village. And it'll have a contact name, number, basically for people who have issues or if something doesn't look right, if their yard's torn up, hasn't been repaired or restored properly, they would call that number. And I'm the project manager, so I'll be seeing all this firsthand. So that's, that's kind of how we're approaching issues and we want to make it as smooth as possible, obviously.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from staff?
Nope, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on. So item 4B is discussion of Oregon Postmaster Brandy Simmons regarding delivery, growth management, T4 mailboxes or cluster boxes? Is Brandy Simmons here?
Paging Brandy?
I guess not. We will go to item C, discussion of Town of Oregon's chair, Wayne Ace, regarding Lincoln Road proposals. So come on up, Wayne, good to see you.
So, so Wayne's going to present the Town of Oregon's Lincoln Road proposal tonight. And there's nothing on here for action. I would anticipate us probably going into closed session at some point to talk about the offer, so just wanted to give you that.
Okay, thanks. I won't take too much of your time here.
Take as much as you need.
Well, we talked about this back when I became chair in the Town of Oregon. It's kind of, we have an agreement with a maintenance agreement with the village and the town on Lincoln Road. And I've met with Mike and Jeff and Jerry and Steve. So everybody else hasn't seen the agreement and I didn't bring a copy of it, so maybe Mike should get one to everybody before we meet again.
Sure.
It's kind of a mess. Right now, if you look on the map up there, zoom in here a little bit. Part of the section of the road of Lincoln Road, we own half of it. We own the south half, you own the north half, from the Union up to about the water tower, correct?
Yeah, just before the water, from A to B on this here. Yes, we own the north half, you own the south half.
And then the village has it from there to the golf course, correct?
Yep, we own the entire roadway right-of-way from B to C.
And then the agreement was, which was put back in 2000 when Bergamot came in, right around that area when the two Jerrys were chairman and president, you guys took maintenance of Fish Hatchery Road, or from Lincoln, from Union Road to Fish Hatchery Road. And my proposal is, or I like to do is, you guys have all of Lincoln Road from Union to the golf course, which is village area. We'll take back from the golf course to Fish Hatchery, which is in the town. This agreement that is out there now, you guys are to maintain Lincoln Road all the way to Fish Hatchery until Bergamot is built out to, is it 80% or 85%? I can't remember which one it is.
I think it's 80.
80? Or 2026? And what is Bergamot at, 60 right now or 50 some?
Something there.
Okay. So anyway, I think we're probably going to hit the 26 before we're going to hit the build-out. So this is one of the reasons why I'm bringing this forward. It's kind of a mess, I'd like to clean it up. We do get out there before the village does and in the wintertime and plow and salt, you know, Lincoln Road now. And I just think it'd make more sense if we just had that and changed this around, don't have to worry about this agreement. In 2026, if we take the road back, the village is responsible to bring Lincoln Road up to, I believe it's a pacer of seven, or eight? Seven? And instead of waiting that long and doing it, we know what Lincoln Road is like, we'd like to take it and get it done and go on. And now with the village also annexing the land out there, Netherwood Road, there's going to be a section there that's going to be, the south half will be the village, the north half will be the town. And of course, again, we will be out there first to plow that road. So I talked to Jeff and we used to do this years ago, we used to get salt from the village because it was just a fair trade. We haven't done it for years. I know we haven't done it probably for several years. Mike remembers it.
Absolutely.
And we used to get salt. So that was going to be one, the proposal was we get salt and then we want.
A certain amount of salt.
Right, a certain amount of salt, yes, every year. And then a lump sum for us to redo Lincoln Road from the golf course to Highway to Fish Hatchery Road.
Are there questions for Wayne right now?
I'm just going to support what Wayne has asked for so far. You know, the situation is just not workable right now. We get a lot of complaints about, especially bikers on Lincoln Road. But even the, the automobile drivers are, are very unhappy with the condition, not the condition, but the, the, the status of Lincoln Road. They don't know who to call if there's a problem.
So I'm just trying to clean it up and get rid of this agreement that just, I mean, if you see the agreement, you'd like, where did it come from? It has something to do with, that has to be maintained the same as Netherwood or something. It's just, it's kind of a joke. I shouldn't say it that way because two people made it up. But I just feel, clean everything up and we could get done with this and get moving forward.
And I agree with what Wayne has said so far. The. And I agree with what Wayne has said so far. The thing we have now that we have not had in the past is we've got two boards that are willing to work together. In the past, whenever this issue was brought up, one of the boards said, no way, not, I don't even want to talk about it. So, this might be an opportunity to take a, an agreement that makes little sense and turn it into an agreement that makes total sense, so.
I agree with you, Jerry. I, I had to sell it to my board or get my board to agree on it. I have a couple that weren't for it. I have some planning commission members that weren't for it until after I explained to them what we were doing and now they're all for it, too. So, I did have Payne and Dolan give us a bid. It's just a verbal bid, but it's like two hundred thousand dollars to go from the golf course to Fish Hatchery. So, that's what we'd be asking for, be that and then salt.
Is that a pulverizing?
Yes, that'd be everything to get it done.
Kind of what you guys did on Belbrook?
Yes, we did on Belbrook.
Wayne, is that?
And there's no figures in that. That's just a verbal price.
No, I know, I know.
That was just an estimate.
Is that a take it or leave it number, Wayne?
No.
No?
For, for the village or for the town, I mean?
Well, for both parties. I mean, is this, are you intending to open negotiations or is it two hundred thousand, take it or leave it?
I would say we would listen.
Okay.
I mean, I'd take back whatever you, you know, you want to do and give to the town.
Okay.
So, the idea, Mike, you're bringing the proposal us. We'll talk about it in close session as negotiating.
I would do that. Yep.
Okay. Does that sound okay, Wayne?
That's fine, yep.
Yeah, we'll all get this and talk about it in close session and get back to you.
Are you thinking like about a month? Is that what you?
Probably.
Yeah. Any else, any questions?
Thanks for working on this, though.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Last day tomorrow for buses, right?
No, last day.
Sound happy.
You, too.
Good night.
Thank you.
Item four D, discussion with David Ferris from Ellis regarding two thousand eighteen borrowing. That was good timing.
David, by chance, did you get the resolutions from Quarles?
I got them on my phone.
You do?
Quarles email went down.
Oh, I kept checking.
It came from somebody's Gmail.
Okay.
I'm trying to actually get it forwarded to you before you called me up, but I ran out of time.
Yeah. So, so the, why I'm asking David is that the resolutions that are in the packet, they're, they're, it's actually good. They're, they're changed. They're better numbers and. So, David, before you pass it out, I'm just wondering if we should, did you also send it to Lisa by chance?
Yes.
So, I'm, I'm wondering if, would you mind if we, we waited to get the resolution, take the other, next item on the agenda? Do you mind waiting, David? I'm sorry to do this for you. I think it'd be good to have the resolutions in front of us. Lisa, would you go up and print them and then? We'll come back to you, David. That's, that's okay with Steve?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I think, I think we, I think the board should have them and, so we had, because we got it when we do the, the vote, we should have the exact number in front of you, so.
Okay, so.
If you don't mind, thank you for that.
Item four E?
Yes, please.
We have a map for that, right?
Yep, ready to go.
We just lost him.
Oh, yeah, do that, sure.
Which one?
What number is that?
What are you guys here for?
G. Or actually, you know, actually, anyway, why don't we do that until Matt comes back? We can do the.
The planning commission?
They're, they're out of, they're F, they're the next item. Jeanie, could you do me a big favor?
Yeah.
Is Matt standing out there? Would you please? Thank, thank you. He, he needs to be here for this, this one, too.
Yeah.
You've lost Corin.
I anticipate. I anticipate that their business view is pretty good.
Sorry, Matt, we.
I thought you were saying.
It's a long. We were, but then we, we're waiting to get some resolutions.
Forward.
Yeah.
So, we're going, we're going to do E.
Okay, so item four E is discussion of possible action regarding consideration of application for license renewal. Class B for Metamalt Beverage for Oregon LLC by Jennifer L. White, Agent at Pizza Pit, one thirty North Main Street, Oregon. And there's a note, please see the memorandum from Police Department in the package. So, I think we'll start with having our attorney explain the ins and outs of this.
Okay, so I will share the background that I'm familiar with. I might ask Chief Yule to help me on making sure I'm getting things correctly stated here.
May I, may I just say something? I'm sorry to interrupt you, Matt.
Yep, sure.
But Steve, is the applicant, have, have anything to say about this or?
Do you want to say anything or just listen for now?
I'm not, the reason I'm bringing this up is Candy's had numerous conversations with Mike. I'm not sure that they want us to go through the history of why this is in front.
Okay.
So, I, in, in front of the board.
Would you prefer we wait, Mike? Uh, but we'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
Because one of the things they could do is they could surrender the license and then we.
Yeah.
We're done.
Well, whatever you guys decide is what's going to happen. I mean, you know, with the occurrence that this was done with, I didn't, when I filled out the application, I didn't have any, there wasn't any incident because, and February second, that's when the incident was in the actual. Went to the actual court. So, that was the court.
But it occurred on March fourth.
Well, it didn't, so, I mean, I was allegedly charged with what? I mean, until it went to court, nobody knew what was going on. So, my attorney just said that, you know, I can addendum, you know, put the addendum in there to redo the application, so.
I'm just informing the board that the incident occurred on March fourth, twenty eighteen.
So, what, what the issue is that, is we're not, they, if I could use this term, falsified the application because of the pending matter, so.
Well, that's one issue. There, there's another issue.
So, it, it looks like we should talk about it then. I guess, let's, let's talk about it.
It's, it's, it's. It gets a little complicated in terms of what the statute says about qualifications to hold a license. So, as I understand it, the applicant here is a limited liability company. The, this, this limited liability company is the current holder of a class B beer and wine license, I believe.
Correct.
And has applied for renewal of that license. And you're, you're, so we're, this is part of the renewal process. The, as I understand it, so under the statutes, in order to be qualified, in order for a corporate entity to be qualified to hold a license. Or I should say, you're not qualified to hold a license as a corporate entity if either the agent or an officer or director or member of an LLC has an arrest or conviction record that is substantially related to the licensed activity. So, that's kind of the legal part here. The, the application that we received shows, and as I understand it, Mr. White is a member of the limited liability company. At least according to the application. So, we're assuming that Mr. White is a member of the LLC and the police background investigation indicated that there's a pending charge. It is a pending charge, actually, for operating while intoxicated as a third offense, as I understand it.
Correct.
And so, if in fact that particular charge is substantially related to the licensed activity, then we have a member of the LLC who's got that pending charge. And that would affect the qualification of the corporation to hold the license. So, that's kind of the factual background that we have. The, the issue for the board tonight is, I, I think there are a couple of directions potentially open to the board. If, if the board concludes that as a result of this qualification issue, the license should not, potentially should not be renewed. Then the board shouldn't make that decision tonight. The applicant has a right to have a hearing. They have a right to have prior notice that the board is going to consider whether to not renew the license. And you should schedule that for consideration before the end of June, because that's when the current license would expire. And then the applicant would have a right to come to that hearing, to bring legal representation. And the board would have to hear the evidence presented at that time and then decide whether or not the license should be renewed or not renewed. So, that would be the direction to go if the board's perspective is that you're, you're concerned about renewing the license at this stage. If the board were to conclude that the license should be renewed, then you don't have to go through that process. I think the key legal question on renewal seems to be whether or not a pending charge for an OWI third is or is not substantially related to the licensed activity here. And I'll leave that to the board to discuss. That seems to be, to be the key kind of legal question. Because the statute seems fairly clear on the qualifications issue. If it's a member of the LLC that has a substantially related charge, then that seems to be disqualifying under the statute. So, I will stop there and see if either Mr. White has anything he wants to say about. I don't know if you said, if I said anything where I just got the facts wrong, it'd be great to know that. Or if you have any other comments and then if the board has any questions, I, I'll do my best to answer them. And if Chief Yule, if I said anything, he's going to let me know on the facts.
Anything to add to that, Mike, from what Matt said? So, questions, comments from the resties?
Well, if one of the questions that we have to answer is whether we think that an OWI three is substantially related to the renewal of a class B liquor license, my answer would be yes, it is. And if one of the questions that we have to decide tonight is whether we should schedule a hearing and deliberate whether or not we need to revoke the license or, if you rephrase that, whether we need to not renew the license, then my answer to that question is yes.
Those are both questions that are before you tonight.
So, Matt, what, what's the notice for the hearing?
You know, certainly we would, we have Mr. White here and so we would tell him tonight verbally, I would check the statute and see if there's any other notice requirement. I'm just not remembering offhand.
Like, could we do it, I guess I'm wondering, could we do it at the next board meeting, I guess?
Well, I think we need to, yeah, I, I think we need to do it at the next board meeting. Let me, while we're, let me look at, see if I can look at the notice procedure here while we're talking.
Was the consumption of the alcohol at your business?
No.
Any other questions or comments? Well.
Well, is this the time to ask specifics about the offenses or offenses or should we do that at a formal hearing? I mean.
That's a great question. I, I think, I think you're allowed to ask questions tonight if you want and if Mr. White would like to answer. I don't think he should be compelled to answer questions tonight. He's not represented by counsel at this point tonight. So, if you'd like to ask questions of, certainly of staff or of Mr. White, I think you can ask. But we're not in a position to make a decision on non-renewal tonight. The decision would be either schedule a hearing and give notice of intent of a hearing on that issue or vote on renewal.
I guess I'd need more information about when, when the previous offenses were and how, how, how you came to hold the license when this is a third offense. Like, I don't get the timeline. How is it that we, we approved it apparently, the renewal in the past or?
We approved it for the last fourteen years because the other ones happened twenty-six years ago.
Oh, okay. All right, so they're very old.
Correct.
So, basically, they're off our radar screen, right?
And, and the, the application for renewal happened when?
This year in April, April twenty-sixth, I signed it. February, Mar, May second was the initial court hearing where then it became a public issue till then the court could find out. So, I didn't know because for the last fourteen years, all I've been doing is just writing the same thing as I did before. I've never even seen the second piece of paper saying that you have to write something else. So, you know, when I was younger, I, you know, times were different and it was a different world. So, now, you know, now twenty-six years later, I'm paying for a mistake that I made. So, it is, you know, it is what it is. I mean, I can't, you know, I can apologize for it, but it would still, you know, it is what it is. Allegedly, this is what happened, so now we are going down this road. And now that, you know, I'm a grown adult instead of a kid, now with the, you know, end-all of be-all, making a, you know, OWI, your first one, you get it at eighteen, you get your second one at forty. You get your third one at sixty, it's still your third one. So, you know, it is what it is. I'm not, you know, a menace to the society. I'm not some monster. And that's what I'm here, you know, to say that the things that happened, happened a long time ago, before I had the business, before I had a lot of stuff. Now, I'm here, I've been a lifelong resident of Oregon and now it's, you know, now the whole world will find out. And that's not what I wanted to happen. You know, I, I didn't want my family to know about this, but now I'm on TV for this. So, you know, you guys decide what's going to happen to me. I already have to pay the consequences. If the, if it's, you know, if I'm even convicted of this, I have no idea. We have to let the courts go, you know, down their merry way and see what really happens with what compared to what. So, that's all I can tell because, you know, I don't even know what's really going to happen. That's why I have an attorney. I'm here because I just, you know, they asked me to be here and now I'm here. I had, you know, I got my email Friday at four-thirty to be here today at five. So, this is as much as I know is the information. So, I hope, hopefully this doesn't affect my business with all the people around town or I just don't want people to look at me different for something that happened twenty-seven years ago. To say, oh, now he has his third, now he's this. Because that's what perception is all about in Oregon and you guys all know it. So, that's as much as I can say and that's as much as I can tell, you know, that we all make mistakes and that's what I can tell you that happened.
Do you, do you have another job? Do you have a second job?
Honing Pizza Pit is my full-time job.
Good, thanks.
Mike, you might understand then that your most recent OWI was twenty years ago?
Well, the third one was, according to him.
No, no, no. The, the first two you said were real old.
Yeah, twenty years, about twenty years. Because I think the, the law states that if you have something before nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay, so the second, the second one was twenty years ago.
I would, two thousand, maybe two thousand?
Two thousand one.
Ninety-nine.
It's two thousand one.
Two thousand one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael, percentage alcohol is part of your business? Like, how mu, how much alcohol do you even sell? Is it, is it a lot? I don't know.
Eight percent, maybe.
Zero eight?
Yeah, like eight percent. I mean, I barely, you know, by the amount of beer that I sell, I probably pay for the license. So, my options were to just drop it and drop it, but I was asked to come here, so I'm here.
Thank you for coming and answering our questions. I know it's not easy for you to do that. I, I do appreciate that.
So, if Michael wasn't on the application, then this would not be, but he's only on it basically because he's part of the LLC, right?
That's it, the.
So, if he, so in order to be off the application, he'd have to be off the LLC?
That's my understanding. Again, the application indicates that Mr. White is, is a member of the limited liability corporation and that's what's creating the issue. So, if he wasn't a member of the LLC, then we wouldn't have this issue before us tonight. I don't know how difficult it is. I don't know how difficult it is from a business standpoint for that issue to be addressed by Mr. White, and that's something he'll have to address, but that's the only legal reason we're here on this issue tonight, is his status as a member of the LLC.
I think it complicated a bit, too, by this has not worked its way through the court system. You know, Mike could be acquitted, right?
He could. And if he is acquitted, obviously, then the charge would not be a factor...
Yeah.
Any, any longer. Right now, because it's a pending charge, it is a factor under the statute.
So how does that affect the application not being accurately completed? We've ad nauseam had this conversation.
So that would be another potential basis for the board to consider non-renewal. I haven't really focused on that aspect of this, so I'm not really, I haven't really looked deeply into this question of exactly what was said or not said on the application, so I'm not really prepared to address that tonight. But assuming for the sake of argument that there was a failure to provide the information on the application, now, this is separate from the discussion we've had about operators' licenses and how it ought to be addressed there, this is a different kind of license. And I don't remember exactly what the language is on the application, so I, maybe somebody has that.
It's in the packet, yeah.
I don't have it in front of me. Maybe Mike could share it with me. I think what it says is, "Are charges for any offenses presently pending excluding traffic offenses not related to alcohol against the named licensee or any other persons affiliated with this licensee?" And so the interesting word to me there is affiliated. You know, what does that mean? And I'm, I'm not sure, I, again, I haven't really dug deeply into how the board might address that issue. It's another potential question that could be the subject of a hearing.
Could we, just as a separate issue, could we, since this is different than a operator's license?
Yeah.
Could we look at amending both of those, those applications simultaneously? Since we haven't really had this, this hasn't come up since I've been on the board.
Well, this, this is a state-approved form that we're looking at here. We do have some supplemental forms that we have prepared and used in the Village, which we may even have here. I don't know if we have supplemental forms here tonight that get deeper into this. We do have supplemental forms that we use for this type of license, which may provide some further information.
So if I can ask, the, the status of, of Mr. White's current alcohol license, you know, operator's license is not in jeopardy by this, it's just the renewal we're looking at?
Right, but the current license will expire at the end of this month, if not renewed.
Okay.
So if it's not renewed, it will terminate effectively, it'll expire at the end of the month. And that's why we have to figure this out, and we have a kind of a narrow window of time.
But from now until then?
From now until then, the license is still valid.
So, so the, the charges do not affect the current license?
Correct, it only if, well, that's actually not, that's not clear to me either, because it's a qualifications issue, so, but even, so it's not, the law isn't self-implementing in the sense that the board would have to take act to, the board could take action to revoke the current license on the basis of the charge and the, and the qualification issue, but given the posture we're in, which is we're in the renewal period, it seems like that would be the more logical process to use. But, so to answer your question, though, in the absence of action by the board to either not renew or revoke, the current license would, would remain in effect through the end of the year.
Okay. But it would be a different conversation if they didn't renew until, you know, six months from now. We might be talking about...
Well, they have to renew, if they didn't renew before the end of June, the license would expire, and then they'd be applying for a new license at that time. Yeah. And I'll just mention one other thing, we've talked about these older charges, they're old, I acknowledge that. The statute doesn't say anything about that, doesn't say that after some period of time those charges, or those convictions are irrelevant. But, so, so the statute doesn't provide any help on that. Just some supplemental, let me just look at the supplemental. So I, we do have a supplemental application where we could, we could seek to clarify what this means on the state form, but we don't have anything on here right now that addresses the, oh, here we go. Let's see what this is. Okay, and this only deals with conviction. So we do have a question on our supplemental form, but it doesn't really specifically address the situation here. It just requests information about whether you've been convicted of a felony, et cetera, regulating the sale of alcohol. And so it doesn't get into this issue.
Well, just in the interest of keeping the meeting shorter, I, I want to make a motion to say that we have a hearing, because I think there's a lot of issues that we just still have questions about, at least I do, so I'd like to make that motion, we wouldn't continue to discuss, yes, but I just...
That'll be on...
I'll move that we have a, a hearing to...
On the June 18, at June 18?
Sure, yes.
To consider potential non-renewal or renewal?
Potential non-renewal, yes.
And then if that motion is adopted, we would give written notice to the applicant that, that we're going to have a hearing on that date.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So the motion, and second, to have a hearing on renewal on January 18th, is there further discussion or questions on that?
June 18.
I'm sorry, June 18. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So June 18th, and you will receive notification of that, Mike. Anything else you want to say right now? Okay, thank you. Now we'll go back to 4D, discussion with David Ferris from Ellers, regarding 2018 borrowing. Welcome.
Thank you. We did not, we were not successful in printing the note, we got the bond, though.
Yeah. You and Steve want to share that?
So I'm going to read items one, two, and three.
Yep, please.
So item one, scope of engagement with Corals and Brady for proposed issuance of $650,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2018A, and proposed issuance of $3 million, $925,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond, series 201B.
2018B.
I'm sorry, yeah, 2018B. I'm having trouble reading, aren't I? So do that one first, and then go to two and three, right?
Yeah, please, yep.
Okay, so we're, go ahead, David.
I think Mike was going to...
Yeah, so the, the board just, we have to approve the scope of engagement with Corals and Brady, so...
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item two, resolution number 18-23, authorizing issuance and sale of $650,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2018A. Just need that motion, please.
Well, I'll take, I'll make that.
Well, actually, actually, Steve, I'm sorry, that, that number's changed, so you gotta...
The $650,000?
The number in the resolution has changed, though.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just hold for a second, please.
Does that change the scope?
Yes.
It's a whole bunch of numbers in here. Do you know what this correct number is supposed to be, Lisa?
It's on the...
No, he's got it there.
Yep, I'm passing up the new information, telling you its results.
Did you print out the, the other one?
No.
They didn't send that one, they're trying, but...
Yeah.
Corals and Brady had an email server issue today, and so the ones that, the one that we did get came from a personal email address.
Yeah, yeah.
And for some odd reason, the $645,000 note.
Okay.
Okay, so this would be 645,000, okay.
Yep.
So most of the wording in the resolution is the same, it's just missing the updated number.
So can, can you explain to me why it doesn't change the scope, Mike?
Well, I mean, it, it may lower the Corals and Brady by a little bit, but it's, it's not, it's not that significant, they're still having to do the same amount of work. They're still preparing the, the resolutions, and they put together the two, the two big documents.
Yeah, so this is just procedural at this point.
Right.
But the motion was made that the issuance of 650,000 for the proposal issuance of 3925, and now the numbers are 645,000 for proposed issuance of 3.88.
Yeah, so...
So should that be amended? Should the scope be amended to reflect the accurate numbers?
I think, I think we can show in the, in the record that the, that the scope of, I see your question, yeah, I got you. So when, when we print the, the motion, we'll make sure we have the correct numbers in there.
Oh, so you'll amend the numbers in the scope of engagement?
Thank you for catching that, yep. Okay, thank you.
So do we have a motion on resolution 1823?
I'll, I'll make that motion, and we'll change the number to...
645,000.
645,000.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so we're back in action here, right?
And just for discussion, Mike, can you remind me, is this refinancing of, of existing bonds, or is this borrowing for some of the work that we're going to be doing?
New, it's new borrowing.
New borrowing.
Yep. Sorry for the confusion, typically, we, we have the, the resolutions, we get it on the day of the sale, and you'd have it in front of you, and, sorry, a little confusion.
Email this...
Technology, technology.
Yeah, it does happen sometimes. So we have the motion, second, for resolution number 18-23, authorizing the issuance and sale of $645,000 of general obligation promissory notes, series 2018A. Are there further questions or comments on this?
I, I guess I, this is the first time I've seen this document, I'd just like to look at it a little bit.
And actually, Dave's gonna... So, so first of all, I'm going to go through the sale data report, and then you'll be able to, to go through the resolutions and approve those by roll call when I, when I'm going through it, so I can kind of tell you how things went compared to what I presented a month ago.
Okay.
Okay. First of all, thank you for letting Ellers serve the Village and present your bond and note sales results today. I'll have you turn to page one in the sale data documents for the $645,000 promissory notes. So this is the 645,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2018A. The purpose of these bonds were to, or the purpose of these notes were to fund some of the planned capital projects, including equipment, street projects, general building improvements, and some water utility projects. About a week and a half ago, Village staff and Ellers staff had a conference call with Moody's Investor Service, and the Village's credit rating was affirmed with a rating of double A2. This is a very good rating for the Village, you should congratulate, you should be congratulated for this accomplishment. The rating report from Moody's can be found on page seven of this document, if you want to take a peek at that quick, there's a couple of things I wanted to point out. They do have this summary sheet where it kind of talks about some of the credit strength, credit challenges, but I thought I'd, I'd focus on the factors that could lead to an upgrade or a downgrade. Basically, the reason that you didn't go to a double A1 is because you need to have more tax base, it, I believe it's around the $2 billion mark, and I think you're in the low 1, 1 billions. So growth is a big part of going to a double A1. Material growth in operating reserves, which means your fund balance would be something that would be bigger, although your fund balance policy is pretty right in there with most places, in fact, maybe a little bit.
Or 30%.
Yeah, 30% is a really good number, I, I would not suggest that you, you know, I don't think there's a reason why you'd go higher unless you found a reason why that should be. And the moderation of fixed asset costs, or fixed costs, which is really related to your debt payments and, and some of the costs like of retirement. And at this point, I think that your, your debt load is, is manageable, so I think you've structured your debt in such a way that, that you're paying off debt at a reasonable rate, and you're also, you don't have a big load of debt, I think you've got a policy on your debt, too, don't you, how much capacity you use?
Not at this point, but we're, it's, it's a little...
Okay. And factors to a downgrade would mean that your village tax base would go down, I think you're growing, I don't think that's an issue at this point. You know, when we talked to Moody's the other day, you were pretty much represented as having a lot of projects that are, are about to take off or in the middle of that, so I, I don't think that's going to be an issue. And significant draws in the operating reserves, well, you've got a policy in place that says that you won't do that. So I don't see the downgrades as being a big factor anytime soon unless you change what you're doing, and I don't think you're probably going to do that, so. Back to page one. So the amounts, the amount of the notes sold today was 645,000 compared to the 650,000 that we presented a month ago in the pre-sale report. The reason that that issue was downsized was due to a reduction of the cost of issuance by about $8,800, of which $5,000 was applied to downsize the issue. The number of bids we received today was five, we like to see at least three, so you had a good interest in your, in your notes today. Notes and bonds actually both had five. If you look at pages two and three, you can see the list of the underwriters that bid on your, your notes. They're listed in order of true interest cost from interest, truageous rate from lowest to highest. You had Bankers Bank, which your local bank, Union Bank and Trust bid with them, Bernardi Securities, Doherty and Company, Northland Securities, and BOK Financial Securities all bid on your notes today. The low bidder was Bankers Bank out of Madison, as I stated, the local, the local bank, Union Bank and Trust participated in that winning bid. It's nice to have the local bank being able to be associated with that win. The low bid true interest rate was 2.7811, and the high bid was 3.0622, which is a difference about $10,000 in interest between the high and the low, so that's a good thing for you. The Village can anticipate receiving its proceeds on June 20th, so they can start paying for some of the projects and equipment purchases that are associated with these notes. And on page five, you have the new repayment schedules broken out by the sources or the funds that will pay for those, so the levy would be paid out of the debt service fund, and the water would be paid by the water utility revenues. Page six actually is the results of, of what we had at the pre-sale compared to the final results, which the final results are what's in the, the repayment schedules. I'll just talk about this page now, and then I won't, you have to, and the bonds, but if you, if you track across that difference in the red in the bottom, the savings was about 139,000 overall, but a part of that is paid by the water and sewer, so there was $133,000 savings compared to the pre-sale report related to the debt service tax levy. For this, for the note itself, though, you save $5,492 based on a comparison to that pre-sale report. Then I'll move into the, the next document, which is the 3.880 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2018B. Once again, I'll direct your attention to page one. The purpose of these bonds was to finance street improvement projects, fire department equipment, buildings for the, for housing of machinery and equipment consisting of a public work storage building, sewer projects, water projects, refuse disposal equipment, and a construction, construction of police facilities and park projects. Like I said before, you were rated a double A2, the number of bids was five again, which is great. In this case, you had, the bidders again were on pages two through four this time, because bonds go out a longer period of time, it spilled onto another page, but you had five bidders Baird out of Milwaukee, FTN Financial Capital Markets, BOK Financial Securities, Northland Securities, and Bankers Bank. The little bidder was Baird out of Milwaukee, and their bid was at 3.1403%. The high bid was 3.4938%, and this ended up being a difference of about $140,000 between that high and low. Once again, your, your proceeds will come, come in on June 20th, so you can start paying for those projects and equipment. And as far as the savings on the bonds itself, that was about 139, 139,000, I think. I thought that was the total, actually, so... Yeah, 139,000. So if there's any questions, I can take those at this time. Otherwise, it was a great sale, I think you did really well today, the rates were pretty good. Good amount of bidders.
Is this just, maybe it's just the packet, because, or maybe it's me, but page seven of 2018B reads to me the same as page six of 2018A?
Yes, they're the same.
Can you help me understand that?
What's that?
Can you just help me understand that, is that just an addendum to 18B?
No, on that schedule, if you look in the middle where those blue highlighted columns are, it's 2018A is in one of the columns and 2018B is in the second column, so I took it, I talked about it at the beginning in the first issue, because this schedule actually shows what the savings were for both issues.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so they're both together on this one. This schedule, what it does is allow you to see how it impacts your tax rate after the issue was sold.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments?
So are we choosing which bid to take, are we automatically taking low bid on these?
I believe you are required to take the low bid.
We're required, okay.
Yeah, and the resolutions both reflect that.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, are we ready for the vote?
Yep. Thank you very much, and remember, this should need, needs to be a roll call.
Yeah, thank you. Mike put that right on the agenda so I wouldn't forget.
He told me to say it again anyways, just for the heck of it.
He knows us.
No, I have to remember sometimes myself. So I think we actually have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
For, but we just make sure the record would show that the amount is 645, the resolution 23, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion second to approve resolution number 18-23, authorizing issuance and sale of $645,000 general obligation promissory notes, series 2018A, so roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Staden?
Yes.
Bernier?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Houdro?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes, that takes us to item three, resolution number 18-24, awaiting the sale of $388,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2018B, and again, we'll send that motion, please.
Can I just clarify, you just said, can you say that value again? I'm looking.
3,880,000, right?
Yep.
That changed too.
Oh, okay, okay.
See, I caught that one.
The agenda is not correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, at the time that the agenda was done, the sale hadn't been.
I was looking here, not here, my bad, sorry.
No, that's fine.
You're paying attention, the numbers are different.
Okay, so.
I'll read that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So any discussion or questions on this at this time? So roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Staden?
Yes.
Bernier?
Yes.
Houdro?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries also.
And so Steve, can we take a moment to sign, I think David was, and then...
Yeah, so, well, we'll take a five minute break.
Could we, please?
Yeah, we're gonna take a five minute break.
Yeah, there we go.
Could run some commercials, Dan. Okay, thank you for that break, we are back live, this is a continuation of the Village of Oregon Board meeting, and we're at item F, and this is from the May 10th Planning Commission meeting, and trustee Carpenter is our representative, so I'll turn this over to her.
Sure, so this is a discussion of possible action regarding the consideration of the Autumn Ridge final plat. There's some background on the agenda for folks, just to know from the Park Board, voted to allow the developer to use the required park lag dedication, or a fee in lieu of park dedication from phase one to create a larger park in phase two, and so that the developer does not implement phase two within 10 years, they have to pay the required fee. So that was the Park Board's recommendation, and then the Planning Commission recommended approval of the final plat with the recommendations in the Village Planner's Memo dated April 27th and the Engineer's Memo, and that was unanimous. So before us tonight, I would make a motion for a discussion that we adopt resolution number 1821, approving the final plat for Autumn Ridge.
I'll second.
And I think the applicants are here, I don't know if you want to hear from them or not.
You might as well talk, you've been here a long time. We've got a long ways to go, so.
Hi, Bruce Hollerwood, you're not quite right, I didn't associate.
I guess we're just here to do our part, helping you guys obtain that double A1 bond rating.
Thank you.
Good one.
Any questions? So any comments, are we ready to vote already? Okay, we've got the motion second to adopt resolution number 18-21, approving the final plat, all in favor?
Aye.
On the post, motion carries.
And then the second thing that I would make a motion for is that we adopt resolution 1822, approving the development agreement of Autumn Ridge.
So do you have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
And can I just draw your attention to exhibit, or, I'm sorry, attachment A shows the phasing 1A, 1AB, oh, thank you, Jeff. And that's what we talked about with, the board talked with Glenn and Bruce at the last meeting about the phasing.
Okay.
Do you have a build-out date in mind, or is that in here somewhere?
Well, I think, you know, it's, much of it is market-driven, but I think, ideally, within the next three years is what, soon we get.
Under current conditions, three years is what I'm hearing. Yeah, we want to do phase 1A for sure this year. Of course, if things went well enough and I can get things going quick enough, there's a possibility of doing 1B this year as well, but that's all depending on how quickly we can get going and how the sales go on the 1A. But three years is what I envision is a reasonable projection.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion second to adopt resolution number 18-22, approving the development agreement, all in favor?
Aye.
On the post, motion carries. We had a long time for that, didn't we?
Thank you.
At least Bruce didn't have much to say after that, so. Okay, so we're gonna go into 9J.
Thanks, guys.
And item J is discussion of possible action regarding Dane County Community Restorative Court, recommend a motion as to direct village staff to list required memorandum of understanding on upcoming board agenda, we have folks here to represent that, so that's what I brought forward, so welcome, please identify yourself and.
Thank you, Mr. Staden. My name is Ron Johnson, I'm the coordinator for the Dane County Community Restorative Court, and my colleague, and it's Stephanie Moreno, she'll be returning in a second, she's a senior social worker assigned to the program. So the Community Restorative Court, CRC, is a pre-charge, this is Stephanie Moreno, this is a social worker.
Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we are a pre-charge diversion program, working with young people of 17 to 25 years old. We are designed to work with misdemeanors, city ordinance violations, and some felonies in terms of finding alternative resolutions to those violations. So we work with 17 to 25 year olds, we receive referrals from law enforcement as well as the District Attorney's Office, and we work an alternative program to the traditional system, so that when a case is referred to the CRC, there is no longer court, police, judges, lawyers, it's a matter of being in front of the Community Restorative Court and the community. Community is represented by volunteers called peacemakers. So we work to hold offenders responsible for the actions that they, for the crimes that they committed, and we give victims an upfront voice and an active role in deciding what happens, and the community is essential. So pretty much when a case is referred to us, we resolve the issue probably through community service, sometimes restitution, sometimes letters of apology, sometimes we get very creative, but when the smoke clears, the charges are dropped, fines are dropped, and they're not CCAP. So the important thing, I think, is that where the crime takes place in Oregon, for example, the peacemakers or community volunteers that help to decide the issue will be from this community. So it's a matter of resolving issues a lot, a lot more efficient sometimes than the traditional system, we're not here to replace the traditional system, but to add another tool to the box. Stephanie, does that leave anything out?
Well, I would just add a couple of things, I mean, we're able to process the offense with the victim as well as the respondent, whereas in the traditional system, they pay a fine and walk away, maybe there's not even a court date or court hearing. During the intake, you know, we have a social worker response, so that we're able to address any sort of trauma, any sort of needs that the respondent or even the victim may have, because the whole point then is to repair harm, but also to assist this person or persons so that they don't reoffend what is actually going on in this person's life that caused them to make this mistake. And so then we're trying to get to the root of the problem. We have a number of resources then that we reach out to within Dane County, of course we try to offer any sort of assistance in a person's community, we want them to be involved in the community, we want them to realize that their actions have actually affected their community, a school, a neighborhood, I mean, and, you know, and traditionally, people don't realize how many others are involved in this and how many others are affected. And so we are, did you talk about expansion?
No.
Okay, and so then we have, right now, we have six jurisdictions with our MOU, and we are providing three more trainings throughout the rest of 2018 in order to get other jurisdictions on board. We will not accept a case until peacemakers have been trained within your community, and then once that happens, it's a, did you talk about the length of that, if you like?
No, I didn't.
So our trainings are, they last for 16 hours, a total of four hours over a period of four evenings. A law professor from the UW of Madison is the one that facilitates the training, and then we, you know, once that training is completed, then the District Attorney's Office will make referrals for misdemeanors and possibly felonies from that community, and then also we receive municipal citations as well.
So you know, the three remaining trainings that we have here, and I do have the machine that I can leave you, leave with you, chief, and we actually have Oregon down to be trained in November, but since you invited us to your meeting, we would like to perhaps move you up to the next training, which is at Lake July. Actually, it starts on... you up to the next training, which is at Lake July. Actually, it starts on July 17th. So the idea is that once we get approval from this assembly and we work with the Police Department, and so for city ordinance violations, that would work as a direct referral from the Police Department. Misdemeanors that above have to be vetted first through the District Attorney's Office.
And so just so you're aware, they presented this information to the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association, yeah, the Chiefs Association. I'm not very familiar with the program itself, but they reached out and they want to expand the program, and so I invited them here for you guys to listen to, to listen to a little bit about that. I will say, in the almost three years I've been here, there's a lot of cases that the DA's office isn't able to prosecute. I'll put it that way. And so this might be a way for some of those folks who maybe wouldn't have got any kind of justice whatsoever to get some through this program itself. So from what I understand of the program, it seems very, very good from what I can see, and it seems like the victims in the community might get some restorative justice, just like it says in this, and that they would have some say on what kind of effects they want to see from, you know, their victimization and what they want to see from the offender as far as how can they make this whole, so.
So right now, we are, as Stephanie was explaining, we are under a memorandum of understanding with the City of Madison, the Town of Madison, Fitchburg, Sun Prairie, UW, and Middleton. And the County Executive, Mr. Parisi, has mandated that we spread the program throughout Dane County. I think it's something like 23 municipalities in Dane County. So the next municipalities that we're going to train will be DeForest, I'm sorry, will be McFarland, Stoughton, Menola, hopefully, Oregon.
So we also, I don't know how familiar people are with the actual restorative justice process and the circle setting, if anybody's ever heard of the circle setting. So what we do is Ron and I will present in this circle, and we bring in the respondent, we also bring in the victim, and then we bring in the trained peacemakers, the community members, right? And then we go through this process of discussing what happened, the offense that took place, who was harmed, how were they harmed, and how can we repair that harm. We often get, we try to get as creative as possible in order to meet the victim needs. You know, for example, we've had respondents fix the door, fix a fence, you know, whatever, there's some sort of physical damage. The other thing, too, is that victims are not mandated to participate in the circle. We want their input, and so then they're able to send a surrogate victim in their place. If they feel more comfortable with that, they can write a letter, they can, you know, send any, any sort of communication that we want to share with the respondent, right? Like, we don't want them to feel uncomfortable. We don't want to re-traumatize them, you know, we want to help assist them. And, you know, often in certain specific cases where there is quite a bit of harm done, you know, we may do one, two, three circles in order to repair that harm, whatever it takes. You know, we don't, this isn't a cookie cutter sort of program. It's about meeting people's needs.
Most cases, by the way, are resolved between, within three months.
Can you, can you just explain to the board what happens if it doesn't, the program doesn't work? What happens then?
If the person is intake in the program and they don't complete what we call a repair harm agreement, that they have to do 25 hours of community service, write a letter of apology, pay restitution. If they don't complete, then the case is referred back to the traditional system, back to law enforcement, and then they have to face that museum. So they go back to court and so forth. So actually, when the case is referred to us, the charges are held in abeyance. They're not even levied, and they're not CCAP. And so if the person does not complete, then the charges, the charges are levied. Yes, sir.
So for municipal citations that would otherwise go to municipal court, the Police Department makes a judgment about whether to refer to your program instead of to municipal court?
Yeah.
It's not the judge, it's the Police Department?
And that judgment is based on criteria that prepares a person for the program, 17 to 25, that they have to be contrice or some contrition, some remorse, be willing to want to, to repair the harm. In the traditional system, things are done to the offender. Without program, things are done with the offender. So in the traditional system, you may be fined, you may be jailed, you may get probation. But in our system, you have to put some, you have to do something, do some community service, sit down in a circle and talk to peacemakers, strangers, maybe even talk to the victim and look them in the, in the eye and have that sort of victim-offender dialogue.
So Brian, have you, have you talked to Judge Cox about this at all?
Nope, not yet. This is the early stages, so we definitely have to have a discussion with him.
I would do that, yeah. Thank you.
Well, and it sounds to me like in order to implement the system, I mean, when you have the incident, I suppose the step one is, you know, the offender is cited. That's probably not the point at which your decision is made. You're gonna need to internally figure out what your process would be.
Right.
Correct.
And I'm sure we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel, that people do it already, so.
Correct. Right, right. I mean, and I think that one of the issues that, that we're having right now is that information is being shared about CRC, and we have a 93% success rate right now for our program, and we're having people from other municipalities calling us and requesting the program, but we can't allow them to participate because their municipality hasn't signed on with the MOU, right? And so, so that's happening quite a bit over the last couple of months, and so we're trying to get out there as much as possible in order to share information about CRC and get your community trained.
So when you say 93% success rate, what does that mean?
That means that of the people that have gone through our process, we have, we have about 10 or 12 have not completed. And so they're, so they were terminated from the program and sent back to law enforcement.
Due to rearrest or just failure to comply. But of all of the cases that we have taken on, there's a 93% success rate.
And do you have feedback from the victims and how they feel about it at the conclusion?
Yes, I mean, every victim that we, that respondent has gone through the program, that they agree with the process. I mean, because we're contacting them all the time. I mean, in the traditional sense, victims don't have any say in the courtroom. They might talk to a victim witness, social worker at the DA's office, but cases are being pushed through with plea agreements and, you know, the victims aren't, aren't being heard. And so we're trying to engage the victim as much as possible, right? And, and we want to help reduce their fear, too. You know, I mean, we could give you one vignette after another of the cases that we've processed and included the victim and how they felt, and it's been positive.
I just have one more question. What's your process for selecting the peacemakers and vetting them?
Basically, they do go through a background check, but pretty much they're Dane County citizens without an open case. So we, we don't have a lot of restrictions, but they do go through a background check.
And so what, what we have traditionally done is that we will train up to 30 peacemakers during one training.
At one time, right.
But given the demand recently of CRC, we're trying to include more municipalities, and so we don't know if those spots are going to get, how quickly they're going to get filled up. I mean, this is the first time in July that we'll be training more than just one community.
One of the values to a municipality like Oregon, it's not that, not only that the victims are involved in that, the respondent, defenders, we call them, we respondants, they get actual, a second chance, but it's a tremendous cost-saving to communities like this. Because instead of going to court and incurring court costs and judge costs and bailiffs and lawyers and so forth, once their case is referred to the CRC, we're the only two paid employees in the program. Everyone else is volunteers.
Quick question. Did we, we did some of this before, correct? I think I came across paperwork at one time I did.
The municipal judge used to do this, but then we stopped doing it.
Is that what that was? Okay, because I know we...
It was a youth court.
Was it a youth court?
Yeah, I'm not sure what, how many components of restorative justice were brought in, but it was a similar type of thing, but I don't think it's quite the same level as what...
I bet that was probably done in the high school.
More advanced level.
Pardon me? I bet that was done in the high school.
It was in the high school, yes, yeah.
Well, I know we had, like, typical situations, if someone trashes a bathroom or something like that at the park or something like that, and then the restorative justice may be having them come back in, clean it, and fix it, that type of thing. So the question I had, I know that one time, one of the difficulties we ran into there was, was just follow-up and...
Supervision.
Supervision, you know, and so how does that work as far as, because I love the idea of the fact that now I don't have to send one of my guys out to go possibly clean it up, or maybe they can take, you know, work out with someone else, but if it takes someone supervising them, one of my staff, then, you know, that causes...
Right, no, we would take care of the supervision and make sure that the person completes. First of all, there's a tremendous incentive for the person to participate and cooperate with this program because charges are dropped, CCAP, and fines are dropped. A typical fight, for example, in the City of Madison would cost like $439 and could go up to $1,000. So to get those fines dropped without having to hire a lawyer is a tremendous incentive to a lot of offenders. Plus, in the circle process that Stephanie was explaining, after each circle, each offender is assigned one of the peacemakers as a mentor for the time, for the duration that they're in the program to make sure that they complete. But at the end of the day, it becomes a case management sort of scenario that we perform.
And we've seen what 20 years ago, things on CCAP can affect people and...
Absolutely.
And so then that's the bigger issue. I mean, the conversation about, I mean, you know, Wisconsin is quite behind the times on the restorative justice process. If you look at through all the national statistics and research that's shown, and, you know, this conversation started years ago due to the racial disparities and the fact that Wisconsin has the worst numbers in the United States. And so then the fact that the CCAP hit can affect, like you said, education, getting an apartment...
Jobs.
Right, go on and on and on, so, yes.
What does the MOU, is it a standard one-size-fits-all type of agreement you can sign with any municipality?
Pretty much.
Wouldn't need time to iron it out? We could go, we hit the ground running pretty quick and we decide to go this way?
Yes, yes. We've already done all the ironing.
Yes.
Or at least most of it.
That's what I like to...
We'll see what Matt has to say.
Is there any cast to the municipality?
No, no, it is, it is, the program is 100% paid for through Dane County. We work for the Department of Human Services.
I'm wondering what, do you have any kind of statistics, like, about recidivism? Like, what kind of rates do you get?
Good question. No, we do not have those statistics. That's something that we have been trying to address. So, you know, we're newer program. We've only been around for...
Almost four years.
Right, right. And so then, up until February, Ron was the only person that was working in the program. I came on in February, and so then we, we have an agenda. I mean, we have things that we want to address, and recidivism is one of them, and we want to do it at three months, six months, and a year. And it would just be CCAP hits, it wouldn't, we can't trace municipality hits in the entire, in Dane County. But yes, we're definitely looking at recidivism. You know, unfortunately, other programs throughout Dane County and throughout the state have not been successful at tracking recidivism, and so then, but that is something that we, is on our to-do list, and we want to follow that.
But, Ms. Peterson, I can send you some statistics that identifies the demographics of the program, the gender, the race, the charges, and so forth. So we can send you our current stats.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. Discussion, further questions?
What's the motion?
I'll just make a comment, I support this completely.
Do you want me to state the motion?
What?
I just heard Matt.
I was just wondering what the motion...
It's in the agenda.
So the motion is to put the MOU on the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Whenever we get it.
Or when we get it.
To direct Village staff to list memorandum of understanding on upcoming...
On an upcoming board agenda.
With, with an action item?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be on for approval.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah. We need to get it.
It's being tricky, I guess.
And can we just get those, can we just make sure to get the statistics, Ron, that you had mentioned before we vote on it?
Okay, I can send that to you tomorrow.
Thanks.
And your brochure cites an evidence-based research on effectiveness, so I don't know if you want to look that up or not, but that's a possibility for us, too. So I was saying, I had some experience with restorative justice, my work for the school system, and some training work with kids, and I support it fully. I think it's a great way to go. Our prison system proves that punishment doesn't work.
Yeah.
Just doesn't work.
And it's not alone.
We keep doing more of the same. It makes no sense to me, and this is a way to break out at, and I think saves some lives, so could be our, I respect the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think most of us feel that way. I have heard nothing but great things about this program, so I'm excited that you're here.
Yeah.
Thank you for the invitation.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Don't leave yet, we have to vote. We could vote it down, you know.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Now you can leave.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to H.
H.
For the fire chief.
To wake, wake the fire chief up back there. Hey, he's doing pretty well. Come on up. We're taking your item. So it's 9H, discussion of possible action on the outdoor burning restricted regulations, and I'll turn that over to Jeanie.
This item is coming from the Personnel Committee, and so we made a motion unanimously that, about revising the outdoor burning restrictions. So I will make the motion that we hold the first reading of Ordinance Number 18-Dash-05, which is an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances relating to outdoor burning. So that's my motion.
A second.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, do you want to tell us what this is?
Well, basically, this is the work of City Attorney here, Village Attorney Matt, and myself in the Fire District. A few months ago, we were asked or challenged a while ago, starting at the staff level, to look at the burning that's allowed in the Village of Oregon, and we made some recommendations to your committee. You took those recommendations at that time and brought them forth, and then Matt basically sat down with myself and our team and came up with this ordinance, and this is the draft that your attorney put together.
So are there questions?
Can you tell us some major changes? Go ahead.
There are some major changes in this, Jerry. And basically, the major changes are basically in the past, over the last, prior to me coming here, how long, I don't know how long this has been going on, basically in the village, you could burn on the first and the third weekend of every month, and this particular ordinance that we're looking at here is we're limiting that, basically, has gone away. The only burning you can basically do is for cooking purposes and fireplace, basically, outside, trying to arrest the sparks and trying to contain it. And we're really looking at the setbacks on structures and property lines. Everything else is basically gone away. Everything else has been repealed, meaning that the, the provisions that prior to public works have in the VAC truck to be able to suck up the leaves in the, in the fall of the year and haul them away, put them in a compost pile, that kind of thing, underneath our current burning, with this first and third weekend, people were burning leaves and other debris throughout the village. Have we had a lot of that? We've had numerous places that we've dealt with that. Police Department has wrote some citations, and it just seems to be one of those things as with the development and the growth of the village, that I think this is the proper thing to do to take care of some of that chaos and try to put a little thumbprint on some of the things that have been happening.
Very good. Thank you, Glenn.
Just a couple of quick questions. One of them is just editorial. Section eight, I'm sorry, section seven and nine reference the word 10 in the number 20. And then, I have a question about, there's a lot of reference to open fire and below-grade fire pits. So my first question is, for homes that already have below-grade fire pits that have been installed that might not fit within these parameters, what's the, what's the approach gonna be? And the second question, it clearly states no grill, and in my mind, that means gas grill, propane grill, charcoal grill, doesn't matter grill, but I know that some gas grills are piped directly from the house to the gas grill, and I have a gas stove inside my house which operates just exactly like a gas grill, so how do we handle that?
Pat, do you want to take that, or you want me to address that?
Well, I will say that this got a lot more complicated than I thought it was gonna get, particularly when it gets to these kinds of questions. So we've got... So we've got a, we've got a definition of open burning at the beginning here.
The very first paragraph.
Yeah, so open burning is, is broadly defined at the very beginning of the process of burning material of any kind where the products of combustion pass directly into the open air without going through a chimney or stack. So let's start with your example of, you've got something in your house. Do you have something that passes into the open air without going through a chimney or stack?
Well, the gas from the gas stove, the propane's ignited and goes directly up into the kitchen.
It's in the stove?
On the, on the stove top.
So it's like a gas burning stove?
Gas burning stove top.
So Glenn, what do we do with that?
Well, I would, I would argue the fact there, Jeff, that you would have a stove top that would be vented through a pipe. So your stove is basically, it's burning, but above that, you're gonna have some ventilated.
You have a fan?
Ventilated hood that's taking care of those gases and taking them out of the house.
Okay.
That is not what I have.
And the, the other version, okay, the other version would be a Gen Air, would be a Gen Air raid where they take it and pull it down again through, through a tube, basically, and vent it out of the house.
So it's a venting.
Still not what I have. So now I'm a little nervous.
It's a Gen Air.
It's a Gen Air, there you go, different model make.
All right, so let's, let's talk about another example, which is.
What do you have?
Out on the deck.
I have a non-fancy fan that just blows it back into my face.
Okay, that's probably.
I'm pretty sure it was bought in an appliance store. I mean, it looks legit, but it definitely doesn't put the fumes anywhere. But right where they are.
And again, we're talking on this here, one of the other things is we're basically talking outside, we're talking open flames, we're not going in the house because the Fire Department, we don't have any jurisdiction in the house, that's one hundred percent building inspector. Other than on a commercial settings.
And the intent, at least when we were working on this, the focus was entirely in the outside. I didn't anticipate any of these kinds of questions about potential inside uses. But, and we did talk quite a bit about what happens on, say, balconies. And you, Jeff, were talking about a potential for, say, a, a gas grill on a balcony that's fed by a, a gas hose from inside the house.
So the reason I even bring this up is because I haven't recently gone through the billing process, was given options, and one of those options was to run the gas directly from inside the house to outside the house, which puts the grill up against the house.
Right against the house?
Well, yeah, I don't know if it's married to the house, but it's not ten feet.
Less than twenty feet, actually.
But we're giving, we're giving some exceptions in there, I mean, as far as certain things, as far as residential properties, single-family dwelling. And again, I think what scares people is, and this is one of the biggest things that Matt and I talked about and our team talked about, is the educational process and how we want to go about this, because this is, is really, it's basically, the intention is to, again, eliminate leaf burning, nuisance burning, things of that nature, not to cause anybody any harm, and to look at the appliances that they currently have and that they can't use, trying to get all that stuff taken care of. So I understand what you're saying, Jeff, but it, it doesn't affect a single-family resident as far as inside the house on that particular item.
So is it twenty feet or is it ten feet?
It is twenty feet for an open flame fire, like a campfire, like you would know it. We're trying to get them set back for twenty feet. If it's a gas grill, propane grill, something you're talking about there, we're trying to get them to be ten feet away from the homes.
And what if it's a charcoal grill?
Charcoal grill would be, again, open flame would be twenty feet.
Well, actually, no, it says ten feet here.
Is that what we got on that one, is ten feet?
It's ten. So for a gas-fueled grill, a charcoal grill, open flame cooking devices, those are ten, that's where we ended up with. It was the outdoor fireplaces, or commercial manufactured outdoor fireplaces, those were the twenty feet.
Okay.
My, my concern is with twenty feet, like an outdoor, I mean, I think how many people in the village have those little horrible fire pits, we call them. Twenty feet from, if it's twenty feet from a house or a structure and twenty feet from the lot line, the majority of homes are not, do not have forty-five, and assuming it's a two or three-foot wide.
Twenty feet, yeah.
Don't have a forty-five-foot wide circle to operate within.
I know some places it's gonna be very tight, there's no doubt about it.
Like, I'd say a lot of them.
I know we wouldn't be able to, for certain.
I mean, and that's why I'm wondering, I mean, maybe, is the, is the fear towards the structure, is the fear towards the lot line?
Well, it's kind of, if we eliminate, if we eliminate the first and third burning and that nuisance part of it, it'll probably more be then pushed back to the structure, you know. And again, the, 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 if you've seen some of the different things that are going on out there, fortunately, we've had, not had any cases lately, but if you have fryers, like turkey fryers and that kind of stuff, that are close to a structure, and somebody drops that bird in there when it's cold, your house is on fire. It's that simple. I'm trying to get the compromise for Oregon to have, to try to deal with this, because as of, in the fall of the year, different times that we went around and we looked at things, like you said, we've got some, some people are really, really good. They bought some of these manufactured units that they have out there, they have their campfire, or this little campfire, and they went to three or four logs, they got a screener out and a metal lid on top of it, that's ideal, they got it sitting on cement, they keep it outside overnight, and we don't have any issues with that kind of stuff. Other places where I've seen this in, in different communities where we haven't addressed this, we have other issues, people bring that stuff in, bring it close to the house. We have a structure fire started by the, having heat sitting close to the vinyl siding, the vinyl siding catches on fire, people are at home, things of that nature, wake, wake up in the middle of the night to a structure fire. What we're trying to do is try to eliminate that and try to make that as tolerable as possible. And trying to, to make, to balance that out in what works for you, the people in Oregon. Yeah, that's, that's the biggest key.
Yeah, I agree with Jeff. I, I just saw a guy pull a fire pit out the other day, and it was probably a good ten feet from the house, I felt it was safe. It was a very well-constructed fire pit with screen sides and a screen top, and I'm sure him and his kids had a great evening, but under these guidelines, he wouldn't have been able to do that.
And it's like I told Matt and the team, I said, we're open to that somewhat, but keep in mind, no matter what that number is, people are gonna push that number on us. Meaning that, you know, myself or the Police Department are gonna have to enforce this. And the biggest thing is to get the recognition, we're not gonna, you know, I shouldn't say this and probably be on TV saying this, but as far as this ten-foot or twenty-foot, if we can get in the minds of people to have this device, whatever it may be, set back further than what they think it needs to be, we're accomplishing what we need to do. And how do we get that, put it in ordinance to try to get this public safety driven in the minds of people?
Well, I, I think from a drafting standpoint, I think the answer is, you know, you've got to pick the number that you think is, the number you want in the ordinance from a safety standpoint, and then the rest is education. So right, if, right now, we're at twenty.
Right.
And so if you feel that twenty is, I guess the question is, is twenty necessary from a safety standpoint? Because we're hearing that twenty might make it impractical for a lot of folks, and.
There again, open flame, open flames, I guess, you know, I would say from a safety standpoint, I know myself, I would not have a open flame fire next to my house twenty feet away. But there again, I don't live in a, in a, you know, small, smaller lot setting either. So I, I personally like to have it away, you know, forty-some feet away from my house. Probably not practical, most people wouldn't want to even hear me say that.
I'd be in my neighbor's yard, at that point.
Exactly. So that number, again, I mean, the, the numbers that we're looking at here are some of the, the standards that are out there, some of the other communities have. And again, it's what, what's right for Oregon is what we have to pick that number to be. Again, originally, we had that number at ten, and we took that number up to twenty, so if you guys are more comfortable with the ten, you know, that's something we can do.
I'd be more comfortable with ten. I agree with keeping grills off of wood decks, that just makes sense, or any combustible material, that just makes sense. And I personally, I would take into consideration families that built their houses prior to this ordinance went into place, I wouldn't ask them to take fire pits out or deconstruct fire pits. Those are my thoughts.
At this point, I know, Matt, we don't have anything in there about a grandfather clause, anything that's built in there or anything of that nature, no. I mean, that's something that we could definitely look at.
So the, the changes I'm hearing discussed, one is the change on the setback for the, the outdoor fireplaces from twenty to ten. And then, so there's a concern now about, say, in an existing structure, like a hard-built fire pit kind of thing?
Yeah, I can think of one right off the top of my, right off the top of my head on Alpine, that I guarantee is not twenty feet away, but it's, it's landscape masonry, you know. And I wouldn't ask him to bulldoze that and fill it in. I'm, I'm sure it cost him three thousand dollars to put it in.
Is it, is it, is it ten feet?
Probably. And my guess is, you know, to Chief's point, he's not having ragers out there, you know, he's not burning old furniture, and, you know, he's got three logs and two kids with sticks and marshmallows, probably.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's just good common sense and fire safety.
Can I ask, Glenn, I've had to rely on you for these definitions. So we've got two different kinds of outdoor fireplaces here. One is the, one is referred to as a below-grade outdoor fireplace.
Yep, which is basically like a pit dug in the ground or a metal bowl or something of that nature.
And then the other is the.
Manufactured.
Commercial manufactured outdoor fireplace. How does, how do those definitions stack up against, say, what Jeff is describing?
The, I actually think that, you know, looking at this, there's actually probably a third one that the team didn't look at, but the third one is that homemade manufactured one that somebody is making, make sure that these provisions are there. That manufactured one is the one that Jeff is talking about and other people, that's basically set, usually it's a metal device set on some legs, and it's got something to catch the ash, it's got some wire around it to take care of the sparks, and it's got a lid on it, which is usually a lot of the times a manufactured.
This sounds like masonry or brick-built.
Well, there are, there are some like that too. I mean, we've, we've had some different people that have contacted us over the, over the tenure that I've been here now, or in the last couple of years, but basically have put some things in, like Jeff has been talking about where they went in, and they, they bought some kind of a sparkarrestor and put it in place. And, you know, and in this particular case, I think it's about twenty-five feet away from the house that the lady put it in. But she's got some other cement blocks around it and some kind of a circular pattern, and then she's capturing all the ashes, she's trying to make sure that they stay cool overnight, things of that nature, and she's got a sparkarrestor on it. So there's a couple different versions that out there that we have.
So my thought is, the options are either adopt this tonight with whatever changes you're comfortable with. Oh, it's not for first reading? We'll put it on the next agenda for a second reading, and if you're comfortable directing us to make changes, you know what they should be, we can, we can try and make those and bring them back to you at the next board meeting. But if you feel like there's more to talk about, then maybe you should go back to committee. I honestly felt like, even tonight, you know, like, my concern is maybe there are types of devices out there that we're not capturing, so like this outdoor masonry device, does it have a chimney on it?
It's just a open, like, brick, brick-built, open fire pit.
But open, so it doesn't, no stack or chimney over it?
No stack or chimney on this one, but.
I'm not sure how that fits in to this, to these definitions.
With, with these questions and these extra things in there, I think it actually should go back to committee, personally. I think we should bring our team back together, bring it back to Jeannie, Jeannie and her group, and, you know, go through all these different things, so that even at your level, you have a real good understanding on what we're trying to accomplish.
And it would be helpful, yeah, if any of you who are not on the committee have any concerns or issues that you think should be considered, if you could make sure we get them.
I wonder if there's, if there's any thought or way to put in like a flame height provision. You know, a recreational campfire would only extend so high.
Yeah, the issue with that is.
Versus a bonfire, which would, yeah.
We've got the square footage in there and everything else, and I mean, it's just like, again, it all comes back to interpretation of our people going out, our officers, our people in command presence have to make an interpretation, and it's basically, they're gonna look at, they're gonna look at how close it is to the house, and they're gonna look at that size, and how much fuel they have on that fire to make that determination, if it's too big for that particular area. So there's a lot of judgment on our part, that why, that's why if I got a little bit more footage away, it's easier for our people to make those judgments, because, you know, you tell people they can use a couple pieces of wood, and only wood, nothing else gets burned, that kind of thing, that's probably not a campfire. With some people, they want this large area. I know that I have, personally have viewed some fires in, in, from the setting of the Fire District parking lot, that have had six-foot flames coming above picket fences. And I went and actually looked to see if the house was on fire. And I think that that is probably something of our safety concern, that in a downtown setting, it's probably not in our best interest to have some of that stuff happening. Again, I'm here to try to prevent fires and try to make sure people are safe. I know I'm stepping on, again, everybody wants to burn, I get that, I'm not trying to take that away, I'm trying to control it and make sure that we don't have any accidents and no loss of life in Oregon. That's what we're trying to do.
Thanks, Chief.
So you're not anti smores?
I'm not anti smores.
Although I have to.
I would refer back to committee for further review.
With a motion on the floor?
Yeah, the motion on the floor is, is, well, it's for the first, first reading, right? I would, I would move, I would suggest that this be, that there be a motion to refer back to committee, and ask the chief to come in and bring in your experts, you know, so we.
We need to bring the whole team in.
We need to talk through this stuff.
Pull this totally apart. What's gonna, what's gonna happen, and it's kind of like, we're already up to three or four pages, but this document's gonna be about six pages, seven pages. But that, that's what's gonna happen, and that's what we've done in other places, we tried to take this watered-down version, and we thought we'd see how it would go.
Can I have you guys look at one more thing?
Sure.
Like, language-wise, I'm, I'm looking under B two, about commercial, commercially manufactured outdoor fireplaces. It says it should have, include a metal bowl or pit for holding wood, must be covered, and have a method for containing embers and sparks. So we, we have a fire pit in our yard with the screen and the lid, and, but we can't roast marshmallows with the lid on and the ember, you know, like, you can't. So like, I just want it, like, maybe change the language, say it must have a cover, but make it clear that it doesn't, the cover doesn't always have to be on, and the ember-containing screen doesn't have to be on, you can take those off to use it.
We're gonna, we're gonna really test this proposition about whether he's for or against smores.
Yeah, exactly, that's why.
Really, quite a bit, you're right, Matt. I get it, I, I understand it fully.
Okay.
Very good.
We can't have two motions on the floor, though, right?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, you can have, the main motion is, well, what, what's the main motion? Do we have an actual motion?
For the first reading, first eighteen oh five.
Okay.
Can we just table it?
Yeah. That would be fine, too.
So if you so desire to be motion to table this, and then we'll just refer to committee.
I'd make a motion that we table my earlier motion and refer back to committee. I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so go.
Excellent.
July sixteenth.
Glenn, what would you prefer? Would you have preferred to do this simple procedure, or do you want to keep adding up to seven to nine pages?
Seven to nine pages, as my past history has shown, people don't read seven to nine pages, Jerry.
I know, I know.
I don't know, looking at this, this started out really easy about taking the, as Matt and I talked about, the first and the third weekends of open burning and burning leaves, and it got in a very complicated issue. So the other way we can probably do this, and I want to talk to Matt and our team, is to go back and look at this as like, the gas grills and all this other kind of stuff is basically, are, we're enforcing on commercial properties and on rental properties, all that kind of stuff, take that out of there and really make it a open burning issue and get rid of all of that other stuff.
Yep.
And then deal with the first and the third weekends, one hundred percent, no burning leaves, nothing else, no, you know, other than wood, and leave this other stuff that all is going on, let that going on where you don't have to call the Fire Department if you want to start your campfire any night.
I mean, you're just talking about public safety here.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We just need to make it really simple, we don't need to complicate this, otherwise the police chief and the fire chief are gonna have a hard time enforcing this, and we really don't need any more complications to our life.
That's my point. That's why I'm wondering about.
Well, really, really simple is no burning. What gets complicated is we want to say, no burning, except. And it's all, now it's, now it's when it gets complicated is.
No, we just don't really want people to burn leaves.
If, if that's it, and, and if, if we want to just say.
It's a little bit more than, it's a little bit more than, than leaves, Jeannie, because over the years now here, just in the time that I've been here, I think I went to, say, half dozen fires where people have actually taken furniture from their house and burned them on the.
Christmas trees.
Burned them on the lawn.
Oh, Christmas trees burn really well.
They do. And that was.
That is like a two-second fire.
Vacation. That is what we're trying to kind of gather around. And then the other thing that kind of goes with that is that part, that next part of that is the nuisance burning, is what is nuisance to you as that person, four or five houses down the road from where this house, where this fire is lit, because now you might have asthma, but everybody before that might not have, and they might like the smell of a campfire. And now we have one person downwind that has asthma, and then we're asked to go and extinguish it and be the, kind of the bad people in the neighborhood, but that's. that's what we have to do, because that person has asthma and we have to take care of that. And I get, I get that, I understand it, we don't have a problem doing that, but it's a whole educational process and it's a, it's just like, if we can try to eliminate, you know, limit this down to, A, Jeff has taken the leaves away, he's taken all the brush away, everything else. You wanna cook your smores, your hot dogs, whatever else, we're not prohibiting that, we'd like to do it in a safe manner, and eliminate the leaf burning and everything else, and, you know, make our lives simple in Oregon, that's what we're trying to do.
So do you have a sample ordinance?
We started with a sample.
We started with a simple ordinance.
No, no, we started with a sample ordinance, that we frankly thought was kind of a problem. It was not at all clear on some things. So, yeah, simple is nice in theory, but it's hard in practice.
Sometimes not at all clear is nice, too, because it gives you flexibility.
That's really not good for these guys when they're out there telling people what they have to stop doing.
And when people read it, then they say, well, this really, this is our interpretation of it. Well, that's really not our interpretation of it, so then we have to go through that, so...
I mean, not at all clear is great for the people who are, just wanna do what they wanna do. It's hard for the enforcement people. And so what we're trying to do is create something that works for the folks that have to be out there enforcing, and that you all, and that your residents can live with. So it seems to me that the key issues I'm hearing are setbacks, and we wanna create more flexibility on what people can do, but we need to be really figuring out what your minimum setbacks are that you're okay with. And one of the things that we talked about, actually I remember very clearly talking to you about, was this question of fires that are disturbing neighbors. And what, what can you do, if anything, from a regulatory standpoint to prevent that from happening? And I don't know that we'll ever really solve that, but it's through what kinda material can you burn, and it's the setback, those two things.
Well, and while you're on the subject of, of specificity and things that might not be in here, is there a reference in here to backyard wood-burning furnaces? Because that's gone through communities...
Don't we already prohibit that? I hope, hopefully we have that.
I think you already got that, by zoning, right?
We can check that, but it should be prohibited already.
I think we did years ago. No, we'll check on that.
Yeah.
So that's the short answer, Jerry.
Thank you.
I appreciate the work, though, it's something that's not so much where you're at, but where you're going, and I think you're heading in the right direction.
And we're not the only community, there's a bunch of them in the state right now, we've been watching this, what's going on in a lot of different communities, talking about the same issue with larger municipalities than the Village of Oregon per se right now. And it's interesting to say, so they're having the same issue, so we're kinda like, I, I would say, you know, it's somewhat learning and going through this together, it's the development that's going on, so...
Okay, thanks, Chief, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, and that takes us all the way back to item six, which is vouchers. We have vouchers tonight.
No.
In about $258,629.97 for approval.
With approval, second.
Are there questions?
Yes, there are. Jeff? Waterfall Hotel Water.
Oh, I was hoping you'd ask this.
I kinda had a feeling...
Waterfall Hotel, brand-new hot water heater, or water heater for the Waterfall Hotel?
Yeah.
Yes. We actually had some very patient tenants, you know, we are landlords out there, and, it was really hot. And we worked with Staley on trying to get the boiler system out there, they were not getting hot water in some of the units, and we worked, and we worked, and we worked. And what it really came down to is it had been a very poorly maintained boiler that was just not gonna be able to work. And so what we ended up doing was just converting it with a brand-new water heater. Scott Staley, I think, had a very good idea. He looked at our water heater down at Public Works, at the Public Works garage, and saw that it is something that we'll probably be needing. That one down there is about 13 or 15 years old. He saw that we'll probably be needing one in the near future. So we bought one that would work down there for the two and a half months we needed it. We put some of it under, obviously, under that TIF 5.
Very good.
And then we're gonna reuse the, the hot water heater.
That was my concern, that we were spending $1,200 bucks on a water heater, and then we're gonna...
If you'll see, there's actually two charges there, we split it. Part of $1,200 was under the, the Waterfall, and then I put the rest under Public Works, because we'll be getting that.
No, that was my concern.
That was a good plan.
Yeah, good job. And then, the next one is AC's main cap for their facade grant?
Yeah, it's just reimbursement for the facade grant.
Is that the total amount they need? Is that all done?
Yes, I looked back on that, that was for, for, that 10%, they asked for 10% reimbursement.
Yep.
Is that for the back, the back of the house there?
No, no, for the front, for the awnings. It was the awnings and the sign upgrade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, so we have vouchers, and the motion is second, in about $258,629.97. Roll call, please.
Purnia?
Yes. Say it again.
She says yes.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sateen?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Bali?
Yes.
That motion passes, thank you. Item seven is community input. Anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board at this time?
Wow. Patience Award goes to you.
It's been entertaining, huh?
All I can think is like, how hungry you guys must be, and you should all bring snacks or something.
Oh, Matt has.
I had popcorn. Darlene sometimes brings us cookies.
Do you have enough for the board?
I don't have enough.
Oh, that's right, make sure the board member's seen, please. I'm not a board member.
I'm not either.
No, but you talk a lot, so you got it.
I know, I was going with like, okay, who do I need to kind of?
Yeah, the seven members.
We can share, I can share with Jeff.
Better work, we can share.
Jeff, you know, and I can, you know, you can...
Yes, I can.
So, I'm Maria Dibavec, we've had some contacts.
Put a name with a face, no?
Yeah, yeah.
Or a face with a name.
Face with a name. So the fire chief actually was a good segue to why I'm here, and I have nothing to do with fire safety. But just the personalization of listening to you guys, 'cause I know when they're talking about fire pits and everyone's thinking, how does this affect me? Where do I have my grill? Can I still roast my marshmallows? Can I still make my smores? So it just became kinda personal. You're all thinking of what this does or means for you when you hear something. So I have a couple of things. One is the speed of the developments that are coming. And so what I did was composed a letter, because there's a lot of talk in our neighborhood, and we're by the Ladopolis development up off of Alpine, the wooded development, which I'll do put in quotes. So throughout this process of that development kinda coming to be, there's just a lot of talk in our neighborhood about the meeting that we attended, it was a planning commission meeting, which we attended in August of 2015 to talk about concerns as to basically preserving the trees in the woods and what was gonna happen, how was that gonna be done? How was that gonna be monitored? Mr. Kai Ladopolis was here representing that group at that meeting, or a planning commission meeting. What was told to us by the developer, by Mr. Ladopolis, and the planning commission group was how that was gonna be happening. That tree preservation was high on the list. Those were the concerns that we were voicing, so that's what they were addressing. That 70-plus percent of the savable trees, or what they considered the good trees, would be saved. These would be marketed as wooded lots. There were several board members who actually said, and it's quoted in the minutes, 'cause I researched and went back and reread the minutes from those meetings, is that someone isn't gonna purchase a wooded lot and then cut down all the trees, which is exactly what's happening. So seeing that happen, right behind our home, Lot 97 to be specific, but other lots too, is that the developer had that information when they came to those meetings. The village and the planning commission had that information that was given to the public. And we really, and I say we, because there's a lot of signatures on this, that neighbors and Oregon residents on page 5A and 5B have signed. We sat here and listened, we've seen something very different, different happen in terms of what was told us. And it doesn't feel good as residents of the community to be told that this is what's gonna be happening, knowing that the developer had the lots already developed, or platted out at that point, it had been approved at that point. And that was not, that information wasn't given to us accurately. So if you look at the size of the majority of those lots, there's no way you can put a home up, and there's standards on the home in terms of square footage. There's no way you can put a home up and not clear out the woods. There's a few lots that are larger, but a fair amount of them, like the one, there's a whole line that'll go near us, but Lot 97, for example, 'cause not that many have sold yet. But they, in order to put a house up, had to cut down the woods. And then when I went back and researched the covenants, the deed restrictions, so this really kinda got me researching everything. The, the covenants and the deed restrictions basically allow that.
Correct, and I think they have three trees they have to preserve, I believe, on...
The table said one, for Lot 97. And numerous lots are one tree. That, to me, and the rest of the folks who signed this, and others who I didn't get a chance to get to, because I just finished this letter a couple nights ago, that's not tree preservation. And that's what was presented to us. Saving one lot, or one tree on a lot, or five, or three, there's a few that have more of the much larger lots. But that's not tree preservation. And then it is also stated in those restrictions, you can cut down every tree if you want, even the ones that are slotted to stay, one tree on Lot 97. If he wants to cut them all down, he can, and within 12 months, he has to replace the one that was slotted to stay with some, a tree, two and a half inches, no, no smaller than two and a half inches. So we're talking about a mature, beautiful forest, which is not even recognizable at this point. So that's very disappointing, that the village would allow that to happen, and vote and approve that, and having that information, and that was not presented to us when we came here. So that's one big chunk of this. The other piece, which goes hand in hand with the developments, and then with the developments, is the projection of our schools really taking off. So we have 4,000 students right now, from 4K to senior. Over a next, not that many number of years, that we're supposed to get 2,000 more kids in our schools. So, which was approved. These developments have been approved by this board, by the planning commission. And it hasn't been smart, it's not, it's not proposed or managed in a way that, that facilitates smart growth. Our schools are not prepared, prepared for it. I've gone to the school forum meetings. They're scrambling. The school board is scrambling, the school administration is scrambling. We have really good schools in Oregon, and we're all, we're choosing to live here because it's a small community, and it's what we value, and it's what we like. And our feeling about a village board is that you're representing us, and we don't feel you're representing what, what we're valuing. So we're here because we like a small community. Let's keep, we have a good thing in Oregon, and let's keep what we have as it is. Development isn't necessarily a good thing. And especially when it's done, boom, boom, boom. Because now we're having this, we're gonna have this influx of kids. Our schools are gonna get larger, we're gonna have referendums, it's gonna cost more money. I'm okay putting money into education, but what I really value is that small school setting and the benefits that our kids get from that, and those benefits are gonna go away, which is really sad. So developing, there's several, there's several pieces to that. There's ways to keep small towns small, and, and keep in check with what we value and why your, why your people live here, basically. If you're like, no, we're gonna do developments, then I think those need to be staggered, and it needs to be done in a much more thoughtful manner, where there isn't gonna be this, this big influx of unsustainable growth, basically. And this, like I said, the school administration and the school board is scrambling, trying to figure out what they're gonna do with all these kids, what buildings they have to redo. Do we have to build more schools? Yes. And our, you know, if you look at it all in the layers, we retain teachers in this district because it's a really, it's a really good, good district. Our classes' sizes are small, we have individualized, personalized education, and teachers like to teach here. It's a really great environment, they're easy to retain for the most part. You have that grow, and that all changes, that changes the feeling of a community, changes the education that our kids get, which is a trickle-down effect to the rest of the community. So the gist of this is, there's a couple things. It's just like, like, in terms of the development and how it was presented to us, it really was not presented accurately when you had accurate information. And that more of these developments are just getting pushed through, seeing that it's money. It just feels like it's that, you know, this development's gonna come in, so it's gonna generate more money. We don't have a downtown to sustain or keep business here. We still have a very small downtown. But money's still gonna pour out of this town. People are gonna go to Madison to jobs, or they're gonna go to Madison to go out for dinner. There's not enough here to, to keep the money in Oregon. And plus, there's not a lot of businesses, so our taxes are gonna, property taxes and homeowners are gonna go up to sustain all the growth that's happening. So, yeah, the neighbors are not, I'm just really feeling very displeased and concerned about the school situation and what's going on in the development behind us when these aren't wooded lots, they're really not. And if I were spending extra money, people spend extra money to buy wooded lots, about 5% to 7% more. If I was buying a wooded lot, and that's how they're marketed on the, on the Ladopolis site, I would feel like, well, the rest of my neighbors are wanting to be in this wooded community, and I would not be very happy if I spent prime dollar on a wooded lot, and then the people on either side of me cut down the woods. And again, the way those lots are designed, you can't leave the woods and put a house up on a fair amount of them. And the covenants and the deed restrictions do not prevent someone from cutting down all the trees and replacing the few that are slotted to be saved with very small trees. So I guess the concern is, don't tell us it's, it's tree preservation, and that's what's gonna happen. And I've quoted the minutes where that, several meetings where that's how it was presented to the public, when that's really not what's happening. And so I just, my question is, how does that happen? How is it that a group presents it to the public in this manner, when you have, you have all the information, and we're here to ask the questions?
So, we were not able to discuss this with you. I don't know if you read through the agenda, but on community input, we can only talk about items that are on the agenda.
Yep, I read through that, I read through that.
So...
So where does this, that's my question. Where does this go? 'Cause it's not just me, I'm just saying, it's not just me. I'm here
Yeah, I can see this.
As a little bit of a voice for other people.
Yeah, yeah. I've just skimmed through this, 'cause we just got it, which I understand you just skimmed it tonight, so I skimmed through it. I would be happy to talk to you about it. I don't know if that will resolve your issues, my guess is it won't, but I think it's a starting point. So if you wanna give me a call tomorrow, we'll get a time to talk about it, and maybe start that conversation, so... I hope that helps at all. You look like it probably doesn't.
I don't know. I mean, it's a starting point, but what my neighbors and I wanted was this to be on public record, and I mean, we're, we're gonna kinda keep going with it. We're gonna look into further, getting further public information, getting the word out there more that this is kind of what happened, and we're not happy with all of these developments that have been approved. And then also the way it's, the information is given to us, my understanding about local government, and our feeling about local government, is there's a little more control by the people who live here, the citizens. My, what I've seen kind of happen in the years that I've been here is that we get information given to us after a decision has already been made. And so we can come in and we can voice concerns, but, and that was actually my very first question when I was at the meeting almost three years ago. My first question was, is this a done deal? Is this development already going in? Is it a done deal, or do we have any say in what happens here? Well, it was already a done deal. I mean, everything was all taken care of, and they were just bringing us in to voice concerns or if we had questions, but it doesn't really, it's not helpful in that manner. It's kinda like being a child and having a decision made for you, and you're just told what's gonna happen, where we'd like a little input, and how, how does that process happen? We're like, we don't, we don't want all these developments, we don't want our schools to grow.
So we can't have a big conversation about this, but
So we can't have a big conversation about this, but it's a very long process that begins with the comprehensive plan, and a lot of people come in late in the process, after lots of decisions have been made. Very first foundational decision being the approval of the comprehensive plan, which then sets forth the framework for everything else. So you should look at the comprehensive plan, because that charts the future of the village right now. And that is changeable, and does change from time to time. And citizen input is a legally required part of the process of developing the comprehensive plan, and it was part of the process. My observation is that a lot of times, what happens is that it's true, people find out about things very late in the game, because people are busy in their lives, and they're not paying attention to everything all the time. You just can't, right? So I just don't, I don't know how much you know about the comprehensive planning process, or, but, but that's a good place to start. It's online, and it'll tell you what the current plan is that's been approved by the village for growth and for development. And, and so if somebody comes to the village and says, I want to do something now that is exactly what your plan says you want, then that tends to happen. So the developments that are being reviewed now, for example, they're all developments that the plan says are planned for, in a sense. They're planned for in the current plan.
So two questions with that, to back, back that way up. Somebody, some human beings, made the comprehensive plan, correct? And made a decision on, this is what we're going to develop?
And I'll just, and I, we can't spend too much time on this, but here's how the process worked. There was a public participation plan. Everyone who lives in the village had a right to participate, and it was, people were educated to the extent we could that this process was going on. So there was a public participation process that led to a process at the planning commission that led to a final decision at the village board. The comprehensive plan itself probably took, the one that's the foundation.
Six months.
Six months, the last time I worked on it. So yes, it's a, it's a lengthy, complicated process, it involves the whole community.
So how are there notifications made for that process before the decisions are made?
I was going to recommend, you know, one of the things that, that people, well, for one thing, I'm always amazed at how few people buy the Observer. I mean, there's something in the Observer every week, and, you know, and I'm amazed at how many people don't follow it online, and I'm not getting reimbursed by the Observer from this blog. But we have an e-notify that is something you can sign up on the website. And we always encourage people, you can decide how much you want to get, whether it's plan commission information, or news bulletins, or whatever. And those are just automatically sent out then.
And I just, I signed up for that about three weeks ago.
Yeah, and I think that's a very effective way for people to, you know, find out what's going on. The other aspect is, I know all of the agendas, all of the board packets, everything's all online, you know, all the time. And so I think some of it is, it's like, for me, if I want to find out information of what's going on up in Madison, I've got to look at what's going on in Madison, you know, and kind of follow up there, and be involved in it. And so that's, that's one of the things, I think, we just ask people, if they want to get that information, to sign up for that, because then they'll get automatic notifies for that.
And I don't think a lot of people are aware of that, because I had emailed you saying, there were several people in my neighborhood that got letters mailed to them about this development that's going to be going on on the other side of North Bergamot, between CC and Netherway.
Those are certain requirements that have to.
So there were a spattering of people who got them, but even like on the same street, many people didn't get it. And one of the neighbors just happened to mention it, and so.
They would have to be within a certain notice, a certain notice raise, and if it got someone on the street.
So we just, we're feeling like the communication was inconsistent, and we.
Yeah. So you can also petition the village to change the rules regarding how notices given of all manner of things.
Yeah.
So right now, we follow state law and local law regarding how notices are given about things. But this is a public comment period, so it's very limited what we can actually engage with you in now. But I would say, again, if you are interested in the things you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Which are basically long-term planning for growth and development, and how it happens, and where it happens, and when it happens, that's all set out, that's all the baseline for that whole discussion starts with the comprehensive plan, which we have, and which can be changed. So you could petition the village to make changes to it, if you think it ought to be changed, and the village can decide whether to go down, you know, to reopen that discussion at any time. But that's kind of the foundational document that I always point people to. If that's, if the issue you're talking about is what you're really concerned about, that's the starting place.
Well, there's several. And the other was how information was presented to us in not an accurate, transparent way in terms of the Lodopolis. So there's two. There's the growth, and there's.
Well, just on that, I was at a lot of meetings about that, and I don't think it's fair to, to make an assertion like that with, that you're not prepared to fully, you know, I don't, I don't remember anyone being misleading about anything. Everything was done in open meetings, all the documents were available, the packets were sent out before the meetings with everything for the whole world to see and read. So I personally feel like you're accusing me, frankly, of being dishonest, and I don't believe I was during that process. I'm sorry, but it feels that way.
I, and I understand what you're saying, and I, it probably does feel that way, because on our end, when we went to that meeting, we were notified about the meeting, because we lived close to what was going to be happening. So we were notified of the meeting. So we came, you know, a group of us, neighbors, and listened to what was told to us about tree preservation, what was going to be happening in the development. And those were all of our concerns, like, how are you going to save these woods as best you can? How does that happen?
There was a written plan.
No, 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 just, just let me finish. And, and that was explained to us, and it was stressed, because our concerns were about that. And one of, my neighbors even asked, like, how is this going to be monitored? And there's really not a monitoring process for that. If you read the deed restrictions and the covenants, and I talked to one of the owners who just bought one of the lots, and she said, there's not a system in place to monitor it. She goes, it's basically compliance of the owner, and compliance could be a problem. And Lodopolis sent me an email, not a very kind email, basically saying he would not discuss this with me, that, and he put in bold, it's like, we, meaning his company, does not have any responsibility in tree preservation. Yet his, I'm not sure what relative of his, it was a relative of his, who came to that meeting and talked to us about, this is the percentage of the trees that we're going to save, and these are wooded lots. So I think, I'm hoping that you can also hear from our standpoint, what was said to us, what questions we asked at that August meeting in 2015 with the planning commission, and Lodopolis being there, and then what we see happening, and then we start digging a little bit further in covenants and deed restrictions, and it is all written out. Those lots can be cleared.
And that's what was presented by at least the documents that were approved ultimately. So, again, I don't know what, it sounds like you're saying that people at this table provided incorrect statements to you and others about what was happening. I don't think that ever happened. I don't.
It was a planning commission meeting. The developer presented, and I know not everybody's on the planning commission, so it was a planning commission meeting. The developer had to present his information to the board to get approved to develop that land. The village approved it. Then there's a planning commission meeting. We were notified of that to come to talk, because we bordered that, that development. So we come, we have our concerns, our questions. If the planning commission had all that information, and Lodopolis had that information.
What information? You mean the written plans?
The, the information, knowing that, and we did have the information on the lot sizes. You, you could easily look at those lot sizes and know, you can't put a house up and keep the woods. But we were told, this is the percentage of trees that will be.
And is that the statement that you're saying is incorrect? That the percentage of trees is, was misrepresented, or?
I think, and there's multiple, and one, one quote was, someone's not going to buy a lot, and then, a wooded lot, and then cut down all the trees.
Yeah, that's my quote. I remember saying that.
And two other, yeah, and two other people commented and agreed with your comment.
Yeah, and, I mean, I, I believe that, so it's very disheartening to me that people are cutting down the trees.
There's, it's gone.
Because that's, that's really what I thought would, I mean, seriously, if I just spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on a, on a lot of trees and then cut them down, it's super disheartening that people are cutting the trees down.
So, but if there's not a plan in place, that's my, that's my point to this. There was not a detailed, enforceable plan in place to save the trees, which is what we were told.
There was, there was, as part of the agreement, there was a map.
Yeah, I remember that.
We had, we had, they had to have a professional arborist, they went through and they did a tree survey. So now you remember the, the, should we be talking about this?
I think we're going too far. I think what should happen is, Steve, you should meet with the residents, and if there needs to be a meeting to talk about.
I can put it in.
I mean, I think the question in my mind, one is, are they following the requirements? And if they are.
Yeah, we shouldn't talk about it.
Then that's fine. If they're not.
They, they have a right to be here to defend themselves, too, so we should.
Technically, the subdivision's not even complete yet.
So.
I mean.
I'd ask Jeff, you look into the, how is this enforced and overseen and so on with the trees?
We're overseen, yeah, we are overseen.
I want to talk about it right now.
No, I.
Okay, we've gone too far already, based on the agenda. So I appreciate your comments. I would like to meet, you can find my phone number on the village website.
Okay. I'd be happy to do that.
Right with you right now. Are you ready? For the phone number? Do you have a pen?
Oh, I do, well.
I have a pen.
I have it.
Okay. It's 205.
Hold on just a second. 7503.
7503. Yeah.
And if you, if you're interested, I'd be happy to meet with you, too, since I'm on the planning commission still.
I'll meet at the same time.
Yeah.
If you'd like. It's your choice. Okay?
It's probably going to be at the Firefly, though, I'm just warning you.
Moving out. So thank you very much for bringing.
Yeah.
Coming forward and seeing three hours to tell us that. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
You clearly spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, neighbors are, there's a lot of concerns.
Yeah, I saw a lot of signatures there. I understand.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Judy? Okay, item A, proclamation announcements. Board comments?
Just going to say, I attended the local government 101 seminar Friday. It was very informative. The village paid for that, so if anybody wants to hear the boring details. I found it interesting, but I'm a little nerdy that way. But I was just saying, I, I went to that, and it was good information for me as a new board member.
So you're saying you'll do a presentation next week?
If, that's what you want.
That's right.
I got to meet Matt's wife.
She do? She does exist.
Yeah.
She said it wasn't her best presentation. She was feeling a little bad. She said the room was terrible.
She did great. She did great.
It was a long, skinny room.
Yeah.
Any other board comments? Item B, staff comments?
Just meeting dates.
Stuff to read there, right?
Yep.
Okay. Item nine, communication, Miss Lance Business, discussion possible. Action, appoint a village board member to the annual tax increment district, join review of board meeting, and that's basically the motion, it's June 12 at 8:00 AM. The reason that's on there is I am not able to attend that meeting.
Probably.
I was assigned by Mr. Grace at one time, but I can't, I can't do it.
Probably be a half an hour meeting.
Yeah.
Which one is that?
The TIF meeting, annual TIF meeting.
Is that the one?
Night, 9:00.
Is that the one next Tuesday? The both?
Yes, yep.
I'll volunteer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
I was going to appoint you, so that's good that you didn't.
I got that vibe, don't worry.
First one to speak up is going to be hungry.
You've been voluntold.
Everybody else is like this.
Yeah, right.
They fell asleep over there.
I could feel the, the laser on me.
So no motions needed, just we'll put, we'll put a ballot in.
Okay. Item B, discussion of possible action, American Transmission Company, supplemental easement. Recommended motion is to approve that easement related to construction of Perry Parkway projects. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Real quick, this is just for a guy wire, for a, we had to relocate a guy wire, and it had to have a pole go across the street, and the guy down, wire ended up going out into the wetland a little farther, so they just needed an additional easement.
Okay, any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious. Item C, police department reports?
I think the only one in there is the school recent.
I gave him a chance.
You gave him a chance, too.
I didn't look at that one, so. Any questions on that? Kyle's almost done in the schools for this year, and ready to move back to patrol, so. And I'm assuming the investigative reports Cherry's looking at right now are very informative.
Is that, that's public records?
Yes. It is now. Yeah.
Okay, item D, discussion of possible action about the Jefferson Street and South Main parking lot lighting and electrical improvements. Recommended motion is to reject all bids, both complete and incomplete bids from the May 10, 2018 Jefferson Street and South Main Street parking lot lighting and electrical project. Further, authorize Public Works to rebid the project in November 2018 for spring 2019 construction. So we need that motion, please.
Some move.
Thank you. And what happened here, one bid was too high, the others were incomplete, and so we basically ended up having to wait and do it again, right?
Yeah.
It was the second go-round, right?
This is the second go-round. It's getting exhausting on this one. And, I mean, we recognize the fact that this means the parking lot won't be done this year. And so, assuming, assuming the motion is, is acted upon, and if that's the case, we'll then go into some public notification, and some notification of the tenants and everything over there, kind of a plan. But we are working with the construction manager over there on what we can do on an interim basis, but we'll have an unfinished parking lot this, this year.
Is the budget for this 430? Is that what it is?
Budget for this was, well, that was with contingency. And, so, yes.
Okay.
And, and obviously getting, you know, we were able to get two prices for the work to be done that were much more in line with what the engineer had estimated without contingency.
Right.
Which means that the work can be done for that price. They just need to bid correctly. Properly.
Yeah. Any additional questions or comments?
It's not impossible to ask those other companies to bid correctly, to resubmit? Or is that not protocol?
We can't do that, as under public bidding, while we've worked with Matt on this, and we looked at many different ways we could do it, the problem is, is, I mean, we have one complete, formal.
Yeah.
No irregularities bid. We could go out and rebid it again this year, but we're getting so late now that, I, the couple of companies that I really thought would bid, there's just so much work out there, that, that they're, you know, that's why I want to bid it even before the December, January bid, you know, flux, I want to get in that November, when they're starting to think about next year.
And we're not concerned that the 430 is too low in this market?
Not when we have, I think, I'd be, I'd agree with you, other than we got those two, the two bids, one from United Electric, and one from the actual company that's doing the work over there now, and they were within $5,000 of each other, and that was a closed, sealed, well, semi-sealed type of thing, so. And our engineer's estimate was, um, well, take, take 20% off of 430, so that's almost $80,000, it was three, you know, 340 or something like that. It's what they thought it could be done for, and that, and they're usually engineers tend to be a little on the conservative side when putting an estimate through.
Other questions, comments?
I just, is the parking lot, you said it'd be unfinished, does that mean it's, it's still usable, right? I mean, can there be parking there?
There will still be parking in there, we may have to, we'll take what, what pavement we have, we may, we may look at doing some pavement patching this year to cover up some of the, the stuff that is, has been exposed this year for, for some of the work that Alliant did. So, we'll, we're just working with them on that. Well, we want to have a surface back there that's workable, that people can see lines, we need to be able to plow it. But it's, you know, we'll still have the two entrances, so there'll still be trucks using the alleyway like they do now. Who knows, we may look back and go, it was a nice transition, we didn't throw the whole building and the, and the parking lot all at once. People get used to it or something like that.
Well, it's the way it's gonna have to be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I, I fully recognize it's not ideal, but.
Make the best of it.
Yeah, we can't force people to bid correctly unfortunately.
Other questions or comments? So we have a motion second to reject all bids and rebid in November for the parking lot, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item B, discussion of possible action, revised job descriptions, recommend a motion, approve revised job descriptions for utility billing clerk two and municipal accounts lie special projects positions.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments here?
They look great.
Time to vote, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item F, discussion of possible action, selecting a local Oregon bank for J.C. Park West fundraising deposits. Obviously, banks want this, uh, we have received, uh, more than one, one, kind of late one for a second one.
Yeah.
So.
We got.
I would suggest that to balance this off, we ask the three banks to each submit their final offer by the 14th of June, it's on our next agenda, we take the best one and approve it. See, this, how do you reject two banks and take one, that's a tough thing to do, so, um, but that gives them all, that levels the playing field, I think they all have this one last chance for their best offer to do this. And I think, in my mind, makes it more clear cut for us, that's the suggestion.
Sounds great.
That sounds good. Eric?
Mr. Banker?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I wasn't sure you were awake, so I checked. Thursday, June 28, 4:00 PM, the groundbreaking for the youth center. We did item H. Item I, uh, I'm pleased to turn this over to Trustee Carpenter.
Mike, I see this is, there's no action.
No, this is FYI, we, we promised the, the board to bring it back as a FYI.
Right.
Yeah.
So we don't need to approve this?
No.
No.
Okay, so is this, is this already in place, this new policy?
We're using it, yep.
And any idea how it's going? I mean, I, I, I like that the chief doesn't, that you're giving us information and letting us decide for ourselves.
Yeah.
Is.
I think Mike made a comment today that he likes how Luke is doing some of the backgrounds and presenting that information to you, so.
Did a great job.
Yeah, I, I think it's working well on our end, I'm, I'm happy to hear some feedback on your end so far, so.
Okay, the only part that I'm concerned about is still about, I feel, I just feel like we're, like it's a test if people get everything right on the form. This continues to make me feel uncomfortable, I'd just like to go on record saying that.
We had a very specific example of somebody that tried to get everything right on the form and failed because some of the information that she needed wasn't on CCAP, when she CCAP'd herself. So we, so we have a.
I know.
Prime example of a human being that did everything possible in my mind, short of having a better memory, and, um, and is, would be denied by this guidelines, and I've got problems with that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, since we, since we approved it, I, I'm also having sort of second thoughts, can we, I mean, I don't know what the chief thinks about this, but can we, we, we background check everybody, right?
Mm-hmm.
So why do we need the question?
Yeah, why do we need the, unless it's an honesty test.
So Jerry Balick brought this up at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And, and so, I knew it's, I thought it was gonna come up again, no, no, it's fine, it's good, no, it's good, I was talking about it. So, um, you know, we're bringing the, the merit point system to the committee on July 16.
Okay.
So do you want me to, do you want me to put the application on the agenda again and talk about it?
I get, sure.
How much more can we put on that?
Yeah, I guess I've had, I've had more thoughts, I've had more thoughts about it, I guess.
I know.
But no, I mean, I.
Unless, unless it's an honesty test and the board wants an honesty test, I'm, maybe I'm in the minority, but I just.
You're not.
I just think, if we're already doing the background checks, why are we going through the motions?
I, I think that, I think when we were talking about when Judge Cox, this is like months ago now, I think the feeling was, while you're, you're making somebody who's gonna be serving alcohol.
Yeah.
Can they take, at least take the responsibility to fill out a form, and I, and I said at that meeting, I believe, and I said a few times, and I'm not saying work and do whatever, it's your decision, Candy.
I know, I know, she goes above and beyond.
No, I probably, no other clerk's office does this, I mean, she guides them through the thing, tells them about CCAP and.
Maybe we should take a look at the types of questions that we're asking, I mean, that might be a better way to do it, because I think there is some value in being able to correctly, um, report incidents, you know, on an application to you guys to make sure that you're getting that information. Yes, I do background everyone, but, you know, I, I don't know that a person, like you said, can get every single thing, but that's still up to you guys on how you want to handle that, correct?
Not according to this.
No, not according to the new thing.
Somebody.
Well, and maybe that's the, maybe that's the change we need to make.
That's my problem, now, it says applicants will be denied, denied for failure, and I know that I voted for this, but now I've thought about it more.
But maybe that's the change you need.
But that's the beauty of it, you thought about it and now we're talking about it.
Maybe that's the change you need to make and decide, okay, I don't want an automatic denial, maybe I want to take a look at it as a board and say, I might make exceptions to it. Or we might make.
That's what I'm, is there anything that your background check might miss that we would want an applicant to put down, like stuff from other states?
Well, that's just it, I mean, stuff from other states is sometimes hard to get accurate information, so, you know, I tried to put it out there, um, in the general area, but, you know, if they're from Florida or something like that, that might not show up.
But we'd want them to own it, to claim it, write something down to let us know that there might be something in another state that we need to check out.
Yeah, I mean, their criminal history.
Within the 10 years that we're going back.
Within the 10 years, right, they could be new to the area and.
Their criminal history should show that, but there could be other things that you might want information about related to alcohol, whatever it might be, that may not show up, so.
Remember, remember that I think I said in the last meeting, we were talking about this, think about how many of these we approve every board meeting?
This is probably, hmm, four, five, maybe six a year that we deal with, I mean, most people do it, they come in, they fill out the application.
Yeah.
It gets put on the board, we didn't even talk about it, we just, we just rushed through it, so, I mean, again, we're talking about very few applicants.
And I would agree, we just seem to have a couple of them back to back, which makes it seem like more, so.
Yeah, but no, it's good.
So do you want to just put this back to committee, is that what we're doing?
Probably, we're gonna be talking about alcohol that night, on that night anyway, so, yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And since we're on the subject of, of, of this document, this is what I was referring to, and I'm sure everybody made that connection. It, it seems odd to me that there would be a disparate treatment for an operator versus somebody who actually holds the license and hires the operator. So I think those things need to be trued up, in whichever way you choose to true it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
And that makes it, I don't know if you can do that based on the restrictions that you have for each type, can you?
Well, we're gonna, as you all know, this gets a little complicated in a hurry. If we want to, uh, so there's a difference between the initial issuance of a license and the renewal process. It, and there is a requirement in both processes that you complete an application. So what we're talking about now is what happens if someone fails to completely and accurately complete an application, potentially even intentionally falsify something or accidentally falsify something. If you're at the stage of initial issuance, you could take that into account in deciding whether to approve that license. In fact, that happened like a year or two ago, uh, where someone provided false information and.
Yep, I recall.
And that led to a denial, so that can happen at that stage of the game. Tonight, we looked at something where, and I'm gonna have, I have a little homework assignment to myself, which is going to be, how can that be considered at the time of, is that grounds for revocation of a license or non-renewal? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm gonna have to get the answer to that.
Good one.
So you already have the authority, uh, to, um, to deny an initial application for a Class B license for providing false information to the board in connection with the application, but what we don't have in that application is this automatic denial if there's a incorrect information. That's only really coming into play on the operator license right now, so, I mean, again, if you want to make that, and, and again, I, my observation has been that for some reason in the last year, we seem to have had more activity than usual with applications where people had a lot of stuff to report and didn't get it all done correctly, and we've had a bunch of those. And so then we've had this debate about, well, what do we do with that, and, so you can see where we are now and that you're not necessarily comfortable with where we are now.
Yeah, that wouldn't necessarily be advocating for now duplicating this, I, I actually would advocate the other way, I would, I would say that the board ought to reserve some discretion. When it comes to these kinds of judgment calls, that's what we're here for, there's seven of us, and, um, and I would prefer to see some of that in the language, as opposed to.
Then I think that should go back to committee and further discussion.
Jenna and I are on the Public Safety Protection Committee, who's, who's on it now? It was Doug.
Oh, I can tell you. Jeff is on, I believe.
Damn it!
I was just gonna say, if, if folks can make it, it'd be really.
Jeff, Jeff's the third.
Well, it would be very cool if everybody could be at that meeting.
On the, on the 16th.
Yeah, we should be there, we shouldn't reproduce that discussion.
Well, because, I mean, according to this, I mean, we're gonna, the Chamber of Commerce Executive Board has requested it, so we're gonna have a bunch of businesses here.
Yeah.
So if you all would like to not throw me under the bus and perhaps be here to be supportive, that'd be great. Just saying.
Just keep in mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Carpenter said.
Board core.
That came back to me.
Just keep, just keep in mind, I think that the initial, um, thought about with the automatic disqualification, it was that it takes some of the, um, how do I want to put it? It, it takes some of the inconsistencies out of it for the board, right? If they falsify the application, I'm sorry, we're not gonna look at it for another six months. And now you're talking about kind of going back to the way it is now, and do you want to look at it individually, and how does that work, and some are gonna be yes, some are gonna be no, and then how is the board gonna be doing on by that?
Yeah, that's a good summary.
Yeah, that's a great summary.
It's not an easy decision, or we wouldn't be here. Lot of opinions.
And, you know, part of the issue I have that I want to see the committee address in case I'm not at the meeting.
Right, I'm sure you'll try to be there.
I'll try to be there, but, but, um, is, is the fact that I don't, I'm uncomfortable a lot of times judging someone based on a piece of paper? I, I would really like it if we made them come to the meeting and talk to us, if, if it comes under question at all, I want to see them face to face.
We always invite them, we always invite them.
Yeah, they're, they're always invited.
Well, but then if they don't show, like, so they're just leaving it us to, up to me looking at a sheet of paper and deciding, well, how I'm gonna vote.
But that's, part, that's a piece you can take into account though, is if they don't show.
They, they get a letter, um, I think the PD denies it, and they get, they've always gotten a letter from the village saying, either, either committee or board, you're curd, you're welcome to attend, yeah.
Are those, are these operator licenses going to committee before they come to the village board, or they just come straight here?
Straight here.
Yeah.
But do we have the right to make it mandatory for them to come so they can answer questions?
No, but, as was said, if they, if they don't come.
Right.
They don't have an opportunity to provide any information to you or answer questions, and so you have to base your decision on just what you have.
And, and is that made clear by the invitation? Like, not just you're invited to come and we encourage you, but like, you know, if you're not there to answer questions, it could be problematic.
Well, and, and there, and if I might, there, there are a lot of communities that actually have a review committee for these that say every year, you have to come in order for us to renew it. So if you have any incidents, whatever it might be, we can talk about those face to face.
Are you talking about alcohol or operator licenses?
Alcohol licenses, yep.
Well, couldn't that be something that Personnel Committee, I mean, because we are already crafting the policy.
I think that's kind of happening on July 16.
But I mean, not, not on a more regular basis, to have a, some sort of review.
Are we gonna be talking about the operator part at the same time though, at that meeting?
This application is getting referred to the committee. The, the application that's in front of you tonight is gonna get referred back to committee.
Okay, but, but I mean, we've talked about the greater possibility of, of, I mean, are we truing up this one to the operator policy, or are we gonna be looking at that, the operator level alcohol policy too?
I don't know.
Well, one thing on the agenda is the question of a point system, right?
Yep.
And then the other issue right now that we clearly would be on the agenda is the policy relating to operator licenses. I'm not aware at this point that there would be something on the agenda about other types of.
I, I actually wrote that, I think we'll, I'll put, discuss the supplemental.
The supplemental application for Class B?
Right, well, yeah, right.
And could be, and should be Class A as well, I would think.
Yeah, but we can't change the state form, but we could, we could ask a better question than what we learned to, that, it's on it tonight regarding the one we were talking about.
Okay.
About, the, the question about information on the, on the form.
So, then my question is, and I don't mean to throw anybody under the bus here, but I'm fresh out of my local government 101 class, and I'm thinking, can you be on that committee as a holder of, of an operator license?
Yes.
That is allowed?
I have looked at that.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And the reason is that, yeah, if, if you, if you're just one person who is in a class of other people, where unless your interest is uniquely different from the other people in that class, you can still participate on the matter. So, um, that's why, like, so for example, if we were gonna specially assess all the houses on your street for a project that we were doing, and we're especially assessing you and all your neighbors, you could still vote on that because you're just one member of a class of similarly situated individuals, and so, if you're the, if you own a.
So financial benefit doesn't weigh in there?
No, that's financial benefit, we're specially assessing you on your street project.
Okay.
So we can, you can vote on that, even though you're one of the people being assessed, because you're, you're not uniquely affected, you're just one member of, of a larger class of people who are affected by a decision, now if you were affected in some unique and special way as the holder of a license or as a person who is being assessed, then you might have a conflict. But, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry, not just trying to use that as an example.
Well, and I, I was asked that.
Accusing anybody.
I've already looked into all that.
Good, awesome.
Yeah, we did check into that right away.
See, that's good, but like, it wasn't public knowledge either, like, I also think it's important for the public to know that we looked into that and it's fine, so, I'm good, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so this goes back to committee, anything else? Okay, we did item J, item K, discussion of possible action on the water utility valve turning machine. Recommend a motion, approve Public Works to procure the Wox compact LX gas and EMT, valve maintenance trailer from EH Wox, the amount of $33,000, $450 with funding from 2017 and 18, approved borrowing.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you.
So Jeff, how do we exercise them now, by hand?
Right now, we, when we do them, we, we exercise them by hand.
By hand, okay.
But, it's a laborious task, and like I said, a valve can take 28 turns, 28 to 30 turns.
So this is a labor-saving device then?
Yeah, we're gonna, this is basically just going to allow us to actually get out, exercise the valves like we should.
So how often should you do it?
Um, once a year.
Once a year, so you're saying it's not getting done that?
Correct.
Okay. What's the life of this machine?
Oh, 20 years.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
More than ours.
You know, I should've said, what, 10, 15? I wonder if anyone got that.
Jeff, you're out of order again.
That's a good question.
No, 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 that, that's.
Anything else on this item? Okay, so we have the motion to approve the valve maintenance trailer, $33,450, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item L, on the Public Works Cold Storage Building advertisement, recommend motion, authorize Public Works to solicit bids for the new Public Works Cold Storage Building to be located on existing village, village property behind the existing Public Works facility at 388 Park Street.
So I'm gonna make a motion, and I'm gonna ask Jeff for a very short condensed synopsis of why we don't want to disassemble and just reassemble the building that we have existing.
Second.
It's too small.
That's pretty short.
That's three words.
I'm good with it.
That was pretty short, Jeff.
Just waiting for Steve to call the motion, I got first and a second.
I'm amazed how short that was.
Hey, he wants to go home.
After all that talk, so you made this motion, the one that's in.
And I seconded it.
Okay, that's what we're voting on, all right.
Yeah. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item M, discussion of possible action, approval of 2018-19 renewal of alcohol beverage licenses, and the, the state of this is an annual, uh, task that we do every, it's, they expire in June, right?
Candy gave me two sets of, and we want the hard copies in front of them to look at.
Okay, so we do these by class? Chief, any businesses we need, should be concerned about?
Well, this was just my inspection of the interior of the business, whether they had the license posted, and whether or not they had gaming or pool tables in there, so, as that goes, there were a couple businesses that didn't have their licenses displayed properly, but that was taken care of, so we're all good to go.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so Class A beer and Class A cider only, both, all three quick trips and stop and go, need a motion please?
Some move. Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Class A combination which is fermented malt beverage and intoxicating liquor, Bill's Food Center, Mahan's Chivanti, and, which is Mahan's Liquor, and JL Richards Meats and Deli.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Class A intoxicating liquor, Chocolate Caper and Quirky's Custom Bakery.
Some move.
Thank you.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Class B combination which is fermented malt beverage and intoxicating liquor, one is Headquarters, Legend of Burgomah, Senior Peppers, Mulligan's, Oregon Bowl, Ace's Main Tap, and Charlie's Main Val.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Class B fermented malt beverage and Class C wine, La Roca's Pizzeria, Maria's Pizza, Firefly Coffee House, Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse, and Oregon Ice Arena.
Before there's a vote on. Before there's a vote on this, this one, Trustee Carpenter, you should rec.
Yep, abstain.
Abstain on, on, on this, because you're one.
So moved, second.
Yes, I asked about that, too, so, okay, so we got the motion, second on those. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Yes.
Got it, thank you. Item 10, reported committees, there are none, 11 minutes, no requiring action, there are none, unfinished business, there is none. New business, approval pending new operator licenses recommended by the, approval by the police department, Quick Trip 302 Bernadette Maurice.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Pending renewal operator licenses, again, recommended approved by the police department, Ace's Main Tap, Catherine Ace, Chocolate Caper, Daniel Donahue, Headquarters, Pamela Powell, Quick Trip 302, Jordan Petrie.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Well, discussion?
Yeah.
So like, the renewal, these are, we're, we're not, I mean, the violations that the chief talked about, these are not significant enough to really be a problem?
No, they're not full sample license.
Okay.
They approved, they approved all these.
Okay, all right.
We only get the problem children.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where there's a potential for non-renewal.
Okay, I gotcha, all right.
Any other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. There's a future gen items of course. Item 15 is a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn, finally.
Man, that was a short one.